Well, good morning, everybody. We will go ahead and start the meeting before the clerk calls a roll. Councilmember Morales has a kindergarten graduation this morning, so he'll be joining us at around 10:30. Clerk?
Corliss.
Here.
Ali Burton.
Here.
Nash.
Here.
Sted.
Here.
Willetts.
Here.
Five present, one absent.
Thank you. Okay, before we kick things off, we've got, everybody's got the schedule. Welcome to all of our department heads and everybody that's helped us with the budget. I wanted to say a couple of things, just first, and thanks, then to tee up the kickoff of the presentation. I've got a list because there are so many of you that were part of this. I want to thank the teams that have made what we're about to discuss today possible and work throughout the year to build the budget, to keep us on track, to help us figure out how many and how much resources we have when so we can best deploy them for our residents rather than holding on to them. And really, the work that's been done to true up the resources that we have to spend for our residents, to keep this place the place that we love. So I want to thank Travis Black, Jesse Stevenson, Justin Erickson, Lisa Owens, Brandon Records, Mike Shurak, Kira Nielsen, Patrick King, Kim Nakamura, Maggie Smith, Eric Bilmoria, and Christine Miller, who worked most closely with all of our department heads on this work. So thank you all. Today's work session is designed to take feedback from the council as we work to build out our budget book collaboratively. And as I noted last week, and we've focused on the last several years, the themes remain true. We've had great success in attracting business, growing business here in the community. And the investments that we're making are designed to take care of people today as well as prepare for the future so that we can continue to provide the opportunity to our residents that we all want as we seek to make this a safe and welcoming city for everyone. The themes that you'll see today are advancing community priorities of housing, transportation, climate, health and safety, all of which is tied to economic opportunity. And it's time that we modernize our core functions, that we recognize that we're a quarter of the way through the 21st century with a lot of 20th century methodologies in our building and throughout municipal government. So you'll see that we're evolving staffing structures, refreshing technology platforms, and diversifying revenue sources. And you'll see these themes play out throughout both the department presentations and overall general presentations today and as we move into the building of the budget book. And with that, I'll hand it over to you.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, my name is Courtney Washburn. I'm the Chief of Staff, and I have the privilege of giving you an overview about today. And then I will turn it over to the directors. I would echo the thanks of the mayor to everybody who put a tremendous amount of effort into the information you'll receive today. Hopefully, they can bring the presentation up so you don't have to just look at me the whole time. Awesome. So this should look familiar. This is the mission of the city. And this is where we are in the budget process overview. We did a budget overview with you, then we did the capital fund budget process, property tax overview, and today we're doing the city council budget workshop. You'll see we have a second workshop coming up. The feedback we get from you today, we will come back to you on budget workshop number two with any specific questions or follow-up you may want as we work our way through the process. The directors will be going over a high-level overview of the impact of the investments made last year and what they would like to do in the coming year. And we expect that that will raise more in-depth questions. And that is what we plan to return to you with on the 25th. Just a reminder, the budget feedback website did go live on 4/10. So here's your morning agenda. After me will be Eric Bilmoria, and then we'll get into the departments, starting with the enterprise funds and ending with the internal services. We do have a built-in break, but we will also break for the noon meeting and then resume this agenda after that time. So as the mayor mentioned, the themes of this budget are housing, climate, transportation, economic opportunity, and health and safety. And we need to modernize the core operations. That includes evolving staff structures, refreshing technology platforms, and diversifying revenue sources. This has been an ongoing conversation with all of you as the city evolves. So I'm hopeful none of these are a surprise to any of you. The considerations in the development of this budget were fiscal responsibility while providing property tax relief, increasing housing and homelessness efforts, and ensuring the service delivery Boiseans expect and deserve. And the highlights, these highlights were pulled out of, and most of the information I'm going to cover are thematic through all the departments. So the departments will give a little more color to these, but these are the highlights represented throughout the 12 departments. Number one is addressing community needs. This is particularly true in the affordable housing space and in the support for housing and homelessness. You'll get a lot of information about workforce planning. We need to evolve our staffing models. We are part of the generational retirement that's happening, and we need to do proactive workforce development. And then we need to address the compensation to maintain our staffing levels. We do have a highlight of operational effectiveness. We need to build on some of the success we've had with data investments, modernizing technology, and adding capacity and process design and change management. And then we seek to evolve our long-range planning using the Modern Zoning Code as a guide. And as we've talked about before, the city needs to seek more grant funding and diversify our revenue streams moving forward. Just to touch on this, this should not be a surprise, but the Idaho population growth continues to lead states in year-over-year growth at 6.2%. The Treasure Valley in the city also continue to grow. And as you're well aware, we are the economic driver and cultural center of not only the state, but given our remoteness, we draw from many places into the city. So I just want to talk about general fund staffing growth needs. This represents one of the largest portions of this budget. So I wanted to put the full-time equivalent asks into perspective. In FY 2017 and 2020, what we consider pre-COVID now, the city added an average of 28 positions. We were a little nervous in the COVID year in terms of adding positions, so we had to play catch-up in 2022 and 2023. And this year and the year after represent a return to normal in the full-time equivalent growth. I'll give you a minute to look at that. So 2021 is where the city took a more conservative approach to staff growth, given the uncertainty. And then, given that we did not experience the devastating consequences that other people did, we needed to play catch-up in '22 and '23. As I mentioned, our retirements continue to rise. You can see the difference between the general employees and contract would include police and fire. So our workforce development, our recruiting is taking into consideration these retirements and the new employees we need to bring on to keep the workforce stable. And then I'm just going to touch on general employee compensation. The city's goals are to retain our talented team, to maintain employees' buying power, to preserve market alignment, and to safeguard gains that we've made in workforce stabilization. And our approach in this budget is a 3% base increase with 1.2 one-time merit incentive money available. And we are committed to maintain a no- or low-cost health insurance plan for all general employees. And then just a note, we're experiencing high Percy rate increases, and that represents 1.5 million impact to the general fund. And you can see how those percentages break out between our general employees and our contract employees. Madam Mayor, with that, I'm happy to stand for any questions, or I can hand it over to Eric to get into more detail.
All right, welcome, Eric.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'm going to go through some high-level themes that were important as part of the development of this budget, queuing things up for the department directors. As always, the underlying theme was fiscal responsibility when developing this budget in its entirety, in particular for the general fund. We do have a balanced general fund budget that is required per state code. We always have a balanced general fund budget. We also ensure that any recommendations that we bring forward for investments would be sustainable over time. So we have a 10-year financial forecast that we maintain within the general fund, and we strive to ensure that we'd be in a balanced position within all 10 years, which we are. We, in reviewing all of our revenue and expenditure targets, we ensure that they're achievable. We don't want to set revenue estimates that are too aggressive, and we will be unable to achieve them, nor do we want to set expenditure budgets that are too low or will blow right past them. Within the aforementioned forecast, we do include allowances for future growth. We know that, you know, certain expenses will be rising over time. We also know that we're going to want to add resources in certain key areas across the organization. Some of those are known but unquantified at this time, but we have built-in allowances to ensure that we can continue to keep up with growth in future years. We also have a cash flow reserve in the general fund. That's basically our rainy day account. The policy for that is to maintain 8% of budgeted general fund revenues. And we have maintained that level, and we expect to maintain it that level in fiscal year 2025. The theme of economic uncertainty certainly was top of mind as we were developing this budget. Inflation, which we'll be hearing about throughout the course of the morning, you know, continues. You know, rising costs, and that's something that was accounted for, most certainly, within the development of this plan. Personnel costs are rising. And one variable we have is that personnel costs for our police department for fiscal year '25 are unknown. So we have, you know, done our best to build in allowances and an estimate, but that was something to account for. And then, thinking about the probability of a recession, you could ask, you know, many economists and get many different answers, whether or not, you know, we're going to have a hard landing, a soft landing, no landing. But we certainly did think about that, and we, you know, going back to the theme of achievable revenue and expenditure targets, we tried to ensure that that was, you know, at the forefront of everybody's mind so we don't set overly aggressive budget estimates. There are many community-related investments, and, you know, forward-facing investments included within this budget. I'll speak to them at a high level, and you'll be hearing from the directors throughout the course of the morning in more detail on them. First one would be Fire Station 13. So all of the necessary staffing, supplies, equipment related to that fire station are included within the proposed budget. The staffing model for that station includes four-person staffing. There are numerous investments at the library at Kohl and Eustick, so staffing investments, technology investments to enhance that branch. As Courtney mentioned, we have investments in housing for the community. Within our capital fund, we have an allowance for Lowell and South pools. We brought an IBC forward earlier this year for design work associated with those pools. Once that design work is complete, we have options to bring forward to council. We'd anticipate bringing forward interim budget changes. The budget includes an increased transfer to our capital fund of approximately $1.2 million per year. We had a discussion several weeks back about the capital fund, and one of the take-home points from now was that escalation has been so severe that our transfers would have needed to have been about 25% higher than they have been over the last several years to keep up with inflation and cost escalation. So a $1.2 million base increase to that capital transfer will make some headway as to closing that gap. Courtney mentioned property tax relief. We have a property tax rebate program that has been very successful the last two years. There is a proposed expansion of that program included as part of the fiscal year '25 budget for in-home childcare providers. Finally, the council's goal of 5% of property taxes being dedicated towards VRT is continued as part of the '25 proposed budget. I did mention, you know, response to inflation and cost escalation. Just want to speak to some of the ongoing increases that are built into the fiscal year '25 proposed budget. Percy or, you know, contributions to the retirement system on a year-over-year basis are up by 18.7%. That's attributable to a number of things. It's attributable to rate increases that every agency is responsible for paying. There's differing rate increases for general employees and public safety employees. Percy costs also go up when headcount is added. So anytime we have to respond to growth, we have to, you know, add salaries, and we also add retirement costs. And then as salaries rise for our existing staff, that also impacts retirement costs. Software on a year-over-year basis is up by 16%. Spoke to that briefly in prior budget presentations. There's numerous dynamics that are contributing to that, aging and end-of-life systems, and then just changes in the overall market as it relates to software. Insurance costs are going up, you know, nearly 10%. Our capital costs, and really what I'm speaking to there is our transfers into the capital fund from our general fund on a year-over-year basis are up by 9%. And then fuel is one of those categories that is also going up, built in about a 9% increase in fiscal year '25. Looking at our general fund revenues, we project right now that fiscal year '25 revenues would be approximately $325 million. The lion's share of that revenue would be in property tax at 58%, slightly lower than it has been in prior years. We've been in the 60%, 62%, 64% range. That 58% mark is, that slight decrease is attributable to increases in a couple of other categories, departmental revenue, our other revenue, and then our carryforward number. In terms of departmental expenses built into fiscal year '25, you can see that over half of the budget is programmed towards public safety needs at 51%. Our Parks and Recreation Department at 14% is being our second-largest. Our support departments collectively being at 14%. And you can see the other departments represented on this slide. In terms of the positions that Courtney spoke to just before I came on, there are 27.9 positions recommended as part of this budget. 12 and a half of those positions are in support of public safety, primarily to support Fire Station 13. There's another five positions that are revenue-neutral within our Parks and Recreation Department, positions to support golf operations, Idaho Ice World, and some of our arts programming. Another 3.7 positions to support library, primarily Kohl and Eustick. And then we have a couple of positions in the mayor's office and a handful of positions to support the proposed Office of Organizational Effectiveness. Looking beyond the general fund, within our enterprise funds, which you'll be hearing about in just a moment, we have robust capital improvement programs within our Airport Water Renewal Fund to address growth and aging infrastructure. And we have staffing to support the increased needs within those funds. Within the Public Works Department Enterprise Funds, we have a recommendation of 14 new positions. And then within the airport, we have a recommendation of 10 new positions. Within the capital fund that I spoke to earlier, we do have increased transfers from the general fund program to address, you know, community needs as well as cost escalation to the tune of about $1.2 million per year. We have allowances for South and Lowell Pools. We have allowances for technology projects, again, to replace end-of-life or missing systems, and then for conversions to cloud-based systems. We have funding to address urgent maintenance needs, urgent maintenance needs, excuse me, at Boise Depot, increased major repairs and maintenance and major equipment costs, major equipment costs primarily being fleet-related. And then a number of Parks and Recreation projects, which Doug will speak to in a little bit. Some of the tools that have been built into this budget to support investments, you know, one of them is planned use of base flexibility. What I'm talking about there would be primarily things like the Percy Increase or Fire Station 13, which have been known and which have been programmed into the forecast for some time. We've built in carryover funding from fiscal year '24. So, you know, we're constantly evaluating current year's revenues and expenditures. And to the degree that we think that there will be any revenues above budget or expenditures below budget, we work to proactively build those into the upcoming fiscal year's budget. That's been a primary contributor to us having a lower end-of-year unallocated funding amount. Foregone property tax is included within this budget. I'll speak to property tax in just a moment. A 1% increase to support community-facing investments. The utilization of our downtown maintenance reserve. So about six years ago, one of the urban renewal districts, the central district, which is right outside of our doors, retired. And when that district retired, city council made a determination to allocate some resources for potential maintenance needs, should they arise. Those maintenance needs have been built into our capital budget as it was, and we have never tapped into that reserve. So rather than having that reserve sit in an account, it's basically allocated for community use as part of this budget. American Rescue Plan Act funding that has been dedicated or was previously programmed for climate action projects is being repurposed towards more immediate needs, particularly around housing, where they can be utilized in compliance with federal mandated timelines. And then Parks Maintenance Facilities. In the fiscal year '22 budget, the council had allocated resources for consolidated Parks Maintenance Facility. That funding is being repurposed as part of this time as we evaluate, you know, support facilities down the line. That funding is being dedicated towards a number of needs, including the pools, technology, and the Boise Depot. I'm going to speak to fiscal year '25 property tax in just a moment, but first I'm going to focus on what property taxes look like this year.
Eric, sorry to interrupt you. Could you go back to, I think it's page 19, it's the pie chart with the FTEs on it? So just a couple of questions before we get too far past this one. We've got the, it looks like the 4.0, or the four positions in organizational effectiveness, and then the two in the mayor's office. Do we know the specifics of those positions yet?
We do. We have specific positions.
And if those come up in later slides, we can wait till then. I didn't see them in the slide deck, but...
Yeah. I don't have the titles of those positions directly at my fingertips. We can get those to you as the day goes on.
And we will walk through when we go deeper after feedback, the positions that are leaving my office, positions that are coming into my office, and some of those are moving into org effectiveness as well. Because at one point back in the day, we added positions citywide, but so that they didn't get kind of lost in a funnel of the department they went into my office. Those are moving into this organizational effectiveness. So think project managers, innovation, things like that.
Great. Yeah, I think having a little bit more details there would be great. Because I think that, I mean, I want to make sure that when I'm looking at like planning and .7 new folks there, that they've got the support that they need, that our clerk's office has the support they need. My guess is that some of those organizational effectiveness positions will have a benefit on multiple departments. And so learning a little bit more about that would be helpful. Thank you.
So looking at current year property taxes, fiscal year '24 was a very favorable year for residential property taxpayers as property tax bills effectively were, you know, anywhere between 8% to 15% lower than they were in the prior year. Many and most homeowners did see reductions in their property tax bill. Those reductions were attributable to assessments for commercial properties increasing more than for residential properties. Also to statewide property tax relief through House Bill 292, and then reduced growth over time in city of Boise property taxes. So for fiscal year '25, there's an assumption of 3% base growth, allowable new construction, and then 1% foregone. That recommendation is striking the balance between preserving service levels and keeping up with growth as well as providing relief to homeowners. The foregone balance would be reduced from $7.5 million to $5.7 million. So the foregone amount is property tax that the city council opted not to take in prior years in order to provide relief, and that would be an ongoing amount. So even with this recommendation, the ongoing property tax budget would be $5.7 million lower than it otherwise could have been. The recommendation is seeking to leverage the relief that was provided in recent years for the continuity and expansion of vital community services. The overall year-over-year growth in the property tax budget is 5.17%. The budget that's recommended as part of this does reflect the impacts from 2021 legislation and is in compliance with that legislation.
And just a question, Eric. So we're at 5.17%. The cap that they set is 8%. And when we go back into an ad foregone every year, that has to fall within the cap as well, correct?
Madam Mayor, that is correct.
Yeah, and talking with other cities yesterday, we're all kind of trying to juggle that equation is when to take foregone, given especially Percy's increases? Because even the limit that the state allows us is less than the increase that the state made for Percy. And so every city in this region right now is trying to juggle that and be strategic in when we take what, so that we don't hit that cap, but that we're able to recover resources to fund the growth that the state has mandated.
Madam Mayor? Eric, thank you. Can you give us a little clarity on the Percy increase? Is that almost nineteen percent overall, or is that a nineteen percent increase in Percy?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Willetts, there's really multiple dimensions to the Percy story. So the eighteen percent increase that I had reflected on an earlier slide was total funding in fiscal year twenty-five versus total funding in fiscal year twenty-four. And the the total amount is driven by multiple factors. It's driven by rate adjustments. So the rate adjustments that Courtney showed on the slide earlier of ten and a half percent and approximately seven percent are year-over-year changes into the rate. So you have rate increases, but you also have built into that eighteen percent compensation adjustments. So as, you know, general employees, as our contract, public safety employees, you know, receive compensation adjustments, Percy is a factor of that. And then as we add headcount to address staff, we also see increased Percy costs. So there's the rate, and then there's the cost attributable to ongoing cost increases.
American fault? So Eric, I want to restate this for clarity. So the city puts in ten percent Percy, the individual puts in ten percent to Percy. But every time we add an individual, that's ten percent we have to put in. And so even even with the rate increase, we're also getting a greater share of of having to put money into that pot, because every time you add an employee, you've got ten percent you've got to put towards Percy that we're paying, correct?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember, I think the percentages are illustrative. But but yes, every time you add an employee, you need to add costs associated with their retirement into the budget. So that's one of the factors. The twenty-seven point nine FTEs have have retirement costs associated with them. As those those twenty-seven point nine positions, as well as all existing staff increasing costs on a year-over-year basis, the contribution into the system needs to increase. And then on top of that, based on the retirement system managed by the state, rates will oftentimes increase to ensure adequate funding levels.
Yeah, so the seven point one and ten point five don't add to get the eighteen percent he's talking about. It's eighteen percent growth total in dollars, but the state added seven point one percent growth for general employees and ten point five percent growth for contract employees. And that's what the mayors in the region and I were discussing yesterday, because that seven point one is still more than our five point one percent budget growth. And the ten point five is twice that, right? So there's just the percentage growth that the state mandated is one thing. And then there's what that means in terms of dollar growth.
The fiscal year twenty-five proposed budget includes the continuation of property tax rebate program for qualifying applicants. The proposal includes the expansion of the program to include in-home childcare providers for fiscal year twenty-five. There is a total allocation of zero point nine million for for that property tax rebate program. That zero point nine million encompasses both the in-home childcare providers as well as the circuit breaker program that's been in existence since the last two years. That program has been wildly successful. There's been nearly ninety percent participation in that program for for eligible residents. When we look at the City of Boise taxes on the average home, the total impact to the average home would be approximately fifty-eight dollars associated with the recommendations included within this budget. The taxes on that average home would be approximately three point four percent lower than they were in fiscal year twenty-three with with these adjustments. With that, I'd be happy to stand for any comments or questions before we work towards the directors.
Madam Mayor? Eric, how would you identify primary budget drivers that are like mandatory or contractual in nature? Like, we are taking five percent, but that's not five percent in just discretionary spending that we'll have authority over. That's, I mean, there's Percy insurance fuel. What are the the big primary, like mandatory budget drivers that we have?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember, thank you for that question. Yeah, we, through the budget process, we evaluate all expenditure lines and have made adjustments in any non-discretionary accounts. So, you know, I'll start, I guess, with with personnel. You know, costs rise for for personnel on a year-over-year basis, whether it be for compensation to maintain position within the market, for healthcare-related costs, or for Percy, as we've talked about. Those those items are generally considered non-discretionary. Within our non-personnel budget, there are numerous things that we can point to. So I highlighted a handful of them on one of the slides. But you can think about things like fuel, right? So as as our public safety departments need to, you know, roam across across the city, fuel costs are rising, and that's something that we need to address. If you think about things like insurance costs, which are mandated by or which are dictated by insurance providers, you know, we need to to increase our funding towards things like that. Within our capital fund, which is primarily supported by our general fund, we have our fleet. And as fleets, as various pieces of our fleet age out and need to be replaced, the cost of of those replacements are growing. There's, in many instances, very little that we can do other than, you know, react to the market and pay what what the cost of those equipment pieces are. Councilmember, is that helpful?
Yeah, thank you. Madam Mayor, Eric, how are we are we tracking? We've talked about this a couple of months ago, but ARPA deadlines? And do you know where we're at with as far as are we going to meet those deadlines to make sure that we get the full value out of that? The ARPA dollars that we have?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, yes. So by the end of this calendar year, all ARPA resources need to be allocated or programmed. And then I believe we have until twenty twenty-six to exhaust those resources. Staff does have a plan and fully anticipates utilizing all of those federal resources.
Thank you. And Madam Mayor, one more. Eric, Councilmember Halliburton mentioned it for the the six positions, but the the remaining new positions. When could we expect a breakdown of of what those positions are, their salary structures and job responsibilities? When could we expect that?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Council President, all of that will be highlighted in the proposed budget, which is scheduled to be released on June fourteenth with a full breakdown. And then there'll be an opportunity for a council to review that for approximately two weeks before we go into our next budget workshop the last week of June.
Madam Mayor, Eric, is it possible to get some sort of a breakdown of where we've added people last? Well, we'll just say post-COVID. So, I mean, last year, we we put folks into public safety, we put some folks into art, as I recall. It'd be helpful for me to know just kind of where we have put folks within departments as we try to ensure that, you know, we've got coverage wherever where we need to be.
Yeah, absolutely. Madam Mayor, Councilmember Willetts, we include a full accounting of all staffing by department, including any proposed additions as part of our budget book. So we can pull pull that from prior budget documents and pass that along.
Thank you. All right, now we're going to move into enterprise funds. And so first, we've got Steve Burgos with Public Works.
Good morning, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers. Thank you for having me. I'm Steve Burgos, the Public Works Director. And I wanted to give an overview of Public Works, both in twenty twenty-four and moving forward in twenty twenty-five. Before I do that, I just want to give you a brief overview of the services that we provide in Public Works and how those are funded. And I'll start on the right with our enterprise funds. So those are our funds that are the fee-for-service funds. In other words, we get a fee, a monthly rate that our our community pays, comes into the fund, and we can only use that funding to provide the services related to that particular fund. So for example, in water renewal services, we treat about thirty million gallons a day of used water. That's about ten billion gallons a year. And the solid waste fund, that includes our trash recycling compost funds, programs, rather. And then the geothermal fund is the nation's largest geothermal fund. We're very proud of the geothermal program. We heat about six million square feet downtown, coming close to about a hundred buildings. And then we have the small but mighty irrigation fund. And on the left side, you can see the general fund. We do get general fund funding, and it covers several programs within Public Works, primarily our climate action program. We're focused on carbon emissions. We do all of our energy planning within climate action, and then we also work on water supply. We run the city's facilities out of Public Works, so all of the general fund buildings, all of the fire stations, libraries, et cetera. We do the planning, design, and construction for those those buildings, and we also operate and maintain those, all those buildings except for the airport. And we also have our streetlights and stormwater programs that are run out of the general fund. So that's a brief overview of what we do in Public Works and how the funding breaks out for the different different programs. Some general trends, high level. We continue to be a leader on climate action throughout the community and the organization. In fact, that spreads even beyond Boise into the Treasure Valley and statewide. We get phone calls every once in a while from cities calling about EVs and how we're starting to integrate those into the fleet. Our utility account growth is at one point five to two percent annually. That's approximately double the assumptions that we made about three or four years ago. And that that ties back to Courtney's presentation that talks about population growth at about six percent. These are accounts, if you assume about two point five persons per household, you can start to multiply that and see that we're kind of close to that six percent in population growth. We continue to see high participation rates in our curbet program. Boiseans are really, they really love their their recycling and their compost programs. We see about a ninety-seven, ninety percent participation rate in both recycling and compost. And then our construction costs continue significant upward trends. There was a memo that was sent out last week just trying to give a brief summary of what we're facing, some of the challenges that are out there, and some of the steps we're taking to try to mitigate. But it is a significant challenge, and I'll share with you some numbers here on the water renewal fund specifically that are presenting some challenges moving forward. I'll start with the general fund, capital funds within Public Works, and looking at our FY twenty-four investments. Very excited to have our clean energy program up and running, and if all goes well, and we get approvals from the Public Utilities Commission, hopefully this fall, we'll have the Boise Airport and the Lander Street Water Renewal Facility running on a hundred percent clean electricity from Idaho Power. Back in the spring, we had Fire Station first thirteen's groundbreaking. You can see the picture there. We also had the groundbreaking for the Warm Springs Grill and Golf, the the new clubhouse that we're excited about. We purchased a state and whitewater property for police. That'll be a micro district that we hope to have remodeled and potentially up and running this fall. And then we're partnering with PDS, and I'll go more into it when we present on PDS on the permit fee study. That's an important study, basically a cost of service study for PDS, and I'll talk more when I come back up to to discuss PDS. Looking forward for twenty-five in the general fund, we're going to kind of try to build on our strong climate action momentum. We've got a three point two million dollar electric vehicles charging and fueling infrastructure grant that we're very excited to start implementing as it'll build out some of the EV infrastructure within Boise. We've got all-electric conversions set for City Hall West, the Boise Depot, and the Vista Housing Project. And then we continue to apply for tax credits from the IRS. We're anticipating, at this point, going back and applying for our twenty twenty-three eligible projects. Those are typically associated with EVs, geothermal projects, a portion of, and also solar that we're putting on on city buildings. And then, last but not least, the grand opening of Fire Station Five. We're making great progress. If you've driven down and looked at the new fire station, we're getting close. It looks great, and we're excited to have the grand opening here in twenty-five. Moving on to water renewal services, in twenty twenty-four, significant investments have paid off. We opened up our new Lander Street Headworks facility. That's the first treatment process at Lander Street. That was one of the oldest components of the of the treatment plan, and we're excited to have that replaced with our new Headworks. We were able to purchase the recycled water facility site out by the Winko Distribution Center. That'll be the home of our future recycled water facility. We hope to have our first drop of recycled water by twenty twenty-nine. The Advanced Water Treatment Pilot is wrapping up. That's been up and running for about a year now. We've had well over a hundred tours. We've had dignitaries through. We just had the EPA's Deputy Administrator come for a tour to the pilot. It's been great, both from a technical standpoint, learning a lot on the technology that might be used in the recycled water program. But it's also been a big advantage for community engagement and getting the community, citizens, businesses, others out to take a look at what we're trying to do with the recycled water program. And then we replaced about six point five miles of pipeline. That sounds like a lot, and it is. But remember, we have about a thousand miles of pipe throughout the city, so this is an ongoing, we just have to stay on top of. And then moving forward for FY twenty-five, we continue to invest on behalf of the community. They told us what the priorities were. They're to develop that new water supply, the proactive system replacement, protecting the Boise River and building new capacities. So you can see at the different facilities how we're fulfilling those commitments we made to the community on those initiatives. We are proposing an overall rate increase of fifteen percent. That is higher than we were hoping for. We're not happy about it, but there have been significant cost increases, both on the construction side and in operations and maintenance, specifically on the construction side of the memo that went out. A great example is just labor costs are going up significantly. And if you think about some of our construction projects, the total cost can be upwards of forty percent just labor costs. So if those are going up significantly, they can greatly increase those construction costs. So we are proposing an overall rate increase of fifteen percent, but trying to reduce it a bit for residential at thirteen point two. And then also in FY twenty-five, something we have not done since twenty fourteen is take a look at our connection fees. The connection fees are just those one-time fees that a house or a business pays to buy into the system. That's the theory that growth pays for growth, and we are adjusting those connection fees. Again, we sent a memo with a we're proposing over the next three years to slowly implement that, so folks get a chance to adjust as we go forward. Moving on to our major capital investments within water renewal. Earlier was mentioned that we're going to be requesting fourteen FTEs. Just for FY twenty-five alone, our capital investments are in a hundred and twenty-five million dollar range. To put that number in perspective, over the past five years, I ran the numbers, we've averaged about a capital investment of about twenty-five million. So this is a significant increase, and in part because we do have to stay up on top of these projects, the capacity projects, the capital replacement projects of an aging system, the recycled water program. So you can see how those break out. The biggest investment next year is our recycled water program. We're getting into our final design process. That's going to be a big lift for staff and our consultant teams. We're also going to be entering into Lander Street Phase Two, which is replacing a lot of the aging infrastructure at Lander Street. And I won't read the rest of those to you, but you can see the other projects that we have proposed for FY twenty-five.
Madam Mayor? Hey, Steve, will you remind us how many phases there are with the Lander Street location and about where we're at in that timeline?
Sure, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Halliburton. We are in Phase Two of three phases. Phase one was finished last year. We came in a little bit behind schedule, but a little bit under budget on Phase one. Phase two is just getting underway. We're probably going to be in Phase two for the next six years. So we're, if you go out to the Lander Street facility now, I was just out last week getting a tour, it does not look like the old Lander Street facility. So Phase two is kicking off on the construction side. We'll be in that phase probably for another six years. And then Phase three is going to start looking at the digester complex at Lander Street, which is very old and is going to need some some replacement. So that's the three phases that we intend. All told, we'll wrap up the three phases probably in the next fifteen to sixteen years.
And Steve, when we look at sort of the next, you know, four to six years that you mentioned for Phase Two, I think you said six, are we expecting to see about that same forty-one million dollar amount each year?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Halliburton, not necessarily. I think all told, right now, we're looking, I have to go back before I stay a number. I'll go back and double check for the total cost estimate because it's been changing. It will it will vary a little bit throughout. Some years will have forty, some might we might have thirty, another might have fifty. another might have 50. And it'll bounce around a bit. But we are trying our best to try to level out those costs because that can help us manage those rate increases that we need.
Great, thank you. Thanks for hard work over there on Lander.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Hi, Steve, thank you for the presentation. Can you give us a little more idea of what the West Boise Capacity Improvements Project is?
Sure, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Corliss. So at West Boise, that's the larger of our two facilities. It's currently rated at about 24 million gallons per day of treatment capacity. What we're looking at at West Boise is there's this interim before the recycled water program comes on. We're going to need a little bit of capacity in between today and then. This project is going to be adding a seventh aeration basin and a seventh secondary clarifier specifically. And that's to open up capacity within the biological treatment process at the facility, as well as the backend, the secondary treatment process. So those are the two major projects that'll be coming out of the capacity improvements. This, what you're seeing here on the slide, Councilmember, is really the design fees associated with that. And so those projects will be happening in the next two to three years out of West Boise.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, moving on to our solid waste program. In 2024, we initiated the strategic planning focused on reduce and reuse. That's our attempt as a city staff and then eventually getting the community engaged on getting further up the supply chain. At this point, we're kind of reacting with trash recycling that's coming to us. We're trying to figure out how do we get further up into that supply chain to try to reduce what's coming into the program. We added four additional electric trash trucks. Republic Services, our franchise hauler, they, the franchise hauler for about 3,500 communities nationwide. And this is the largest electric fleet that they have in the nation. So we're up to 10 total EV trucks. Really proud of the 42% residential diversion rate from the landfill. So that's all the solid waste that we collect at a home, 42% go to other places than the landfill. So that's recycling, that's composting, the orange energy bag, et cetera. And then this past year, we were trying to get more focused on commercial waste and frankly, on commercial recycling. That's an area we see potential for great improvement. So staff has been going out and giving free business waste evaluations to try to encourage folks to really think about their recycling programs because it can save them money, one, but it's also the right thing to do. So we've done many waste evaluations for commercial properties around the city. And looking into '25, we're going to complete the strategic plan, and we'll be coming back to Mayor and Council with some recommendations. And we do have some rate increases proposed for the solid waste program. Similarly, labor costs are increasing. The Ada County landfill is increasing their tip fee by about 10%. And so we had to capture some of those costs and make sure that we could cover them. So we are proposing the rate increases that you see at the bottom of the slide. And then last but not least, our geothermal and irrigation funds, focusing on geothermal specifically. Thank you to Mayor and Council. The ARPA funding that you all provided for the 10th Street geothermal project is currently underway. And we're going to get that done this summer, going back to the timeframes that Eric alluded to. It's a priority project to make sure we get that done so we use that ARPA money in the correct timeframe. We had some injection well upgrades to increase capacity and then a geothermal extension to the BSU Materials Science Building. For '25, we've got a modernization project on Capitol Boulevard. Lots of interest from the community and a lot of the new buildings coming in downtown are calling us and saying, hey, how do we connect the geothermal? So we're working those angles. Part of that angle is making progress on water rights. We're coming up on our water right total. We think we have some solutions there, working with the Department of Water Resources. But that's certainly a priority to make sure that we're not turning anyone away because of water rights.
Steve.
Yes.
Madam Mayor, I have a question. So with those residential increases that are coming, is that, how does that compare to historical trends? Historic trends, do we see, did we take that increase also last year? Can you speak to that at all?
Madam Mayor, Councilpro Temsted, thank you. I can go back and get the details and we could send the trend over the last like 10 years. But it is in keeping with some of the trends we've had over the past couple of years, just trying to keep up with costs. We had several years, two or three years ago, we had maybe 2% rate increases. The last couple of years, they've been a little bit higher. But I can get you the trend analysis and send that over.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor. Steve, do you have an idea of like what type of investment the city, I don't know, over a 10-year period would be making in something like water rights associated with its geothermal system? Like what, what does this investment look like? And I'm thinking generally, we had some conversations a couple of months ago about how Idaho doesn't have a water right that's specific to something like geothermal. And I just want to get an idea of what type of investment we'd be making and is there, would that warrant some type of legal change that might benefit the city?
Madam Mayor, Council President Nash, thank you for the question. It's an interesting one, and we've been talking about it internally. State of Utah is a good example. For any water rights associated with geothermal, you actually don't need water rights for geothermal in Utah. Because if you're injecting back into the aqua for an effect, you've got that, that basically circular loop. We haven't approached that yet with the Department of Water Resources. We're currently working under the regime of needing water rights for geothermal. We have some ways to add to our geothermal water rights. All the investment we're making are internal to staff, staff time. We don't necessarily have to pay for the quote-unquote water rights. But it is something that we may come back to you all and ask some, for guidance on, maybe an approach to get that adjusted with the Department of Water Resources. Because in effect, it's the non-consumptive use. And so that would be the kind of case we'd like to make. So we may come back and ask for some, some help on that.
Madam Mayor, Steve, thank you. Piggybacking on the question, I'd like a history of the rate increases for both water renewal and residential. I think that would be helpful for us to look over time. And then one of the things that I think would be very helpful is just the staging of the water renewal bond. Because I know after the bond passed, we talked a lot about trying to beat inflation and tried to get in those bonds at lower interest rates. And so it would just be helpful to understand how much of this $125 million investment is coming from that versus other things.
Madam Mayor.
Well, yeah, I was going to ask, you could address that right away and then share the rate at which we got WIFI access for the $470 million, which is quite a bit lower.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Willis. So we issued bonds back in 2022. That was our first issuance, our 2022 series. That was about $80 million. I'll have to go back and check on the exact interest rate because they've been bopping all over around. But the WIFI loan that the mayor referred to, we have been able to get a better interest rate through the WIFI loan. It's lower by potentially half to a full percent. And I'll go back and again, get those final numbers for you. We are looking to issue our 2024 series this year, and we're trying to time that. We're seeing if the Fed will have a rate decrease. We're trying to time that, so we're holding on that. But we can come back to you and give you a summary or a memo of just a summary of the, kind of how we're breaking out the bonding for what projects, et cetera.
Madam Mayor, Steve, I know we're looking at the cost of the connection fees to water. Have we taken a look to see for those residents that are on well, what it would take, and how many people there are on well, and what it would take to get them connected to city water?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Corliss, let me go back and take a look. The connection fees that you would be referring to there would be to the Veolia system. And so I'd have to go back and check what their connection fees are to the water system. And it's going to be greatly dependent on if the infrastructure's in place. So if you're in the middle of the Southwest and you're in an area where the closest water line is, say, half a mile away, that's a very different proposition than if your house is running, you're on a well and it runs right in front of your house. So let me go back and take a look for you.
Okay, I appreciate that. I think we need to take a look at this long-term to see those within the city of Boise, how many we have on wells? And how far are those connection points? And what do we, what's it going to take to get a resolution to look at getting these people hooked up to city water?
Madam Mayor. Oh, sorry.
I was going to say, probably be in concert with Veolia. Thank you.
Yeah, and to be clear on that, when other developments are built, it's the homeowners or the builders that pay those connection fees, not the city. And so there's a cost, but it'd be, we'd be hard-pressed to come up with the total value there to pay for some folks to be connected when all other Boiseans have paid themselves to be connected. That, that's the issue, that I think the residents have been presented with the cost to connect, and it's high.
I don't think all the residents may have been, Madam Mayor. In talking with neighbors and within Southwest Boise when I was out campaigning, I think people don't know where the connection point is and how much that's going to cost. But I think that's a concern that we're going to need to take a look at and what that cost is going to be. I appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Councilmember, we have that information, the number of homes on a well and proximity, so we can get that. And then, last but not least, all the work we just talked about, and Courtney alluded to it earlier, that several organizations within the city are going through reorganizations. Public Works is one of those. We haven't revisited our org chart, as far as I know, for at least three decades. And so part of what we were doing in '23 was to go through a staffing study to figure out how are we aligned with what we know is coming in the future, not with what we were dealing with in the past. Implementation of the reorg started in January of '24. We think this positions the city's programs for what's coming in the future, things like more business analysts, project managers, an electoral engineer we've never had on staff. We know that's going to be a need coming forward. Right now, we're paying consultants for that. Let's bring some of that in-house and save some money. And the other big thing was for us, we had supervisors that maybe had 15 direct reports, 18 direct reports. And it was just too much, so we were trying to get our span of control reduced. So we're really excited, we're rolling out the reorg here in 2024. It'll be in place starting in January of '25, and then we'll be off and running, hopefully preparing the department for the future.
And this gets to the, kind of modernize the business. And most of our departments have gone through this exercise, and now we're doing that in the same way with all the directors in terms of how the city works and what that span of control looks like.
That's all I have.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you, I'll turn it over to the airport.
All right. And Kathleen Watkins is with us today because I think Rebecca's in DC working on some flights.
Yes, that's correct. Fingers crossed she gets us some new air service. That would be wonderful. So, can you hear me all right? A little bit shorter. Let's see.
Welcome.
All right, here we are. The Boise Airport is a department of the city of Boise, but it is a regional asset serving the entire Treasure Valley region. As the valley has grown, passenger traffic at the airport has also grown exponentially. The goal of the airport is to maintain a comfortable travel experience for our passengers while keeping pace with the community growth. Keeping the conveniences of traveling out of a smaller airport in spite of the continued expansion is important to our customer satisfaction. Some of these conveniences are highlighted here in our customer feedback. Passengers report enjoying easy navigation, clean and safe environment, great views, and nice people. The Boise Airport is somewhat unique in the city in that it is a self-supporting enterprise fund. Our revenues do not come from general fund, and we don't use tax dollars to fund our operations. Instead, we charge user fees, develop airport property, and apply for federal grants to fund the airport. As a self-supporting entity, diversifying our revenue streams is essential. And as you can see, we have a wide variety of funding sources. Parking revenues is our largest revenue generator with over $16 million generated in fiscal year '23. Airlines and rental car companies also provide a large portion of our revenues. Additionally, we manage our non-aeronautical sources of revenue, such as industrial, industrial land rent, which helps us to maintain a certain level of funding during declines in the travel industry. In fiscal year '25, we anticipate a slight increase in revenues. We are forecasting revenue of $72.5 million as the Boise area continues to grow and air travel expands to accommodate this. We anticipate the mix of our funding sources to be similar to what we have seen in the past with parking and airlines providing over 40% of the revenue. Speaking of growth, with Idaho as the fourth fastest-growing state in the country, we are working hard to keep up with the growth in air traffic. Empainments are the number of passengers boarding planes here in Boise. And this is a look at our actual and forecasted employments. In fiscal year '23, we had 2.3 million employments, which is up 17% from our pre-COVID numbers in 2019. The 2019 employment numbers were a record high at that time, and we have now fully recovered from the pandemic and are well above those numbers. We anticipate that we will be at 2.7 million employments by fiscal year 2028. Probably helps keep your notes in the right order, huh? So how are we keeping up with the growth? We are now the sixth, in the sixth year of our BOI expansion program. As part of this expansion, we opened the East Parking Garage in August of 2023, adding 1,100 parking spaces for public near the, for the public near the terminal. This month, we just completed our employee parking garage and are in the process of moving employees, including concessionaires, airline employees, TS workers, and more into the garage. Also, we just started the construction of a seven-level, 1,300-space consolidated rental car facility just west of a terminal. This facility is expected to be completed by spring of 2026. And then the addition of Concourse A is in the planning phase and is estimated to begin construction after the rental car garage is complete. Finally, the existing concourses will be upgraded and modernized to match the standards of our new concourse. Recent investments at the airport are the expansion of the security checkpoint, which added additional lanes for screening, the parking garages that I just mentioned, numerous airfield construction projects, numerous airfield construction projects, and an updated concession program that will start in October. Also, with the assistance of Public Works Department, the terminal went to one hundred percent clean electricity this year. In keeping with our efforts to diversify revenue, we are working to develop our non-aeronautical land. There are now four new industrial development projects, including Black Market Gelato, Frito-Lay, White Cap Electrical, and a spec building. As this development progresses, the airport will continue to expand its revenue from this source. The airport is requesting one hundred and twelve point five million in capital projects for fiscal year twenty twenty five. Some of the more significant projects are highlighted here. This request is in line with recent years' capital budgets, which include large projects that are part of the BOI upgrades, such as concourse A, and also some large projects initiated to take advantage of the infrastructure bill grant funds available for improvements again this year. Finally, I'll leave you with a nice comment from Moody's. He rated our upcoming construction bond. They mentioned our strong competitive position, quick recovery from the pandemic, as well as their favorable view of airport management credibility and track record of prudent management practices. Thank you for your time today. I stand for questions.
Thank you. Yes.
And I'm Mayor Kathleen. Thank you so much for the presentation. One quick question. Does the, the airport landing fees, does that include freight like UPS and Amazon?
Yes.
Thank you.
And Mayor, no questions, just, just compliment. Great job over there at the airport. Thinking ahead all the time, all the time, all the time, and it's good to see that we anticipate continued growth over there and that we've got a good plan to get the, get us there for the amount of employments that we expect to see in the next several years. So we'll keep pushing hard, but we appreciate the hard work over there.
All right. Well, thank you very much. And now we are going to take a break. We'll be back in ten minutes. All right, we're going to go ahead and get started. We've got Deputy Chief Tammany Brooks with us today. Nope, is it? Who's first? Oh, okay, great. Come on up.
Well, good morning, Madam Mayor, members of council. Romeo Gervais, Assistant Chief with Boise Fire. Today, we're presenting jointly with, with public safety, and we'll kick it off a little bit with both of us and then turn it over to PD for, for some discussions on police and then follow up with fire. Many of you have seen this before, but these are public safety priorities that both our departments have put together and worked for. We have a lot of similarities, as you might guess, and a lot of teamwork and collaboration between the two of us. The, the first one really that we look at is response evolution. So we continue to look at how we respond to emergencies and maybe even more importantly, how we respond before the emergency occurs, looking at our community risk reduction efforts, different things like that, to really make sure we're servicing the community effectively. The next one that we're really looking at is workforce stabilization. Courtney mentioned it earlier. It's not only a citywide problem, but certainly we see it in public safety, where we have to look at how we recruit, how we make sure we maintain that diversity. And then obviously, our workforce is changing. We, we mentioned some of the retirements, different things like that that we're starting to see. But how do we maintain and how do we continue to solicit, if you will, the, the best folks to work for us, and then we retain them? So with that, I'll turn it over to Deputy Chief Brooks.
Thank you, Chief. Good morning, Madam Mayor and members of council. My name is Tammany Brooks. I'm the deputy police chief. I'll take the next two priority initiatives, the first being capital planning and investment. We're thankful for the continued shared public safety investment that we've had great success with regarding the community fire stations, which provide a concept of allowing a drop in space for police officers to work. And then also with the employee wellness and both for police and fire, we're committed to improving the health and well-being of our staff so they could be the best versions of themselves, both personally and professionally. So moving on to focus on the police department for a few minutes, I want to start off by saying thank you for the investment city leadership and council has made and continues to make with the Boise Police Department to support our priority initiatives. Your investments have enabled us to provide better service to our community, to build relationships with those we serve, and to help people not only be safe, but to enjoy a sense of safety as well. And I'll provide a reminder of what investments we've made in FY twenty four, as well as the impacts those have had on our community. We continue to rely on evidence-based models and aim to serve unique populations with tailored responses as effectively and efficiently as possible. Over the last year, we've made great strides in stabilizing our workforce. We have a recruitment team that is bringing in a highly qualified pool of applicants to fill our current vacancies. We're growing our training staff to accommodate larger police academies while also continuing to host in-service training for all of our officers, including a renewed focus on de-escalation and pre-response planning for calls for service. Over the last year and a half, we've filled seven open lieutenant positions, two open captain positions, and filled two additional lieutenant positions that were provided to us in FY twenty four. And during that same time, we had ten sergeant promotions, and we filled all the professional staff supervisor vacancies, which means for the first time in several years, our department has all leadership positions filled within our organization, which is a huge feat. With that said, staffing levels in law enforcement are cyclical, and the Boise Police Department is no different. So we continue to keep a close eye on the upcoming retirements and ensure our hiring can support filling the planned attrition. Now, on a positive note, we continue to see a large number of retirements each year, and while that means we have to continue hiring more people, we're really proud of the fact that we get to see many police department employees having full twenty to thirty-year careers. And through all this dedication and hard work, we do expect to be at or close to full staffing for the number of officers we're allocated by the beginning of next calendar year.
And Deputy Chief, beginning of next calendar year because Recruit Academy will have just finished, is that?
Madam Mayor, that's correct. Well-
Will they be done with FTO time as well or field training, I guess, or is it, it's considered fully staffed and after they graduate as they move into field training?
Madam Mayor, what I mean by that is so we'll have some officers that are still in the field training program, but in January, we will start a new police academy. And so while the numbers will be there, not everyone will be actually filling the spot in the field, per se, but we'll at least have them hired and either working or in training.
So that, that's why I was trying to figure out timing because it seemed different. So the field tra, the new academy starts in January-ish of next year, and that's when we will be, we'll have hired and be fully staffed.
Yes, ma'am.
Great, thanks.
To provide better service to our community and continue reducing crime, we need to be a data-driven organization, which means allocating resources to meet the trends occurring in our community. Some examples of how we do this are increasing officer presence during the summer months on our green belt and float put-in-and-take-out locations, identifying hotspots of activity in the city and allocating resources to those areas. And also, we had a sergeant position approved in FY twenty four that allowed us to build an additional patrol team to work peak hours for service times for calls for service with available staffing. And these changes helped reduce the overall response time to calls for service to the lowest time on record, the overall average response time of being nine minutes and twenty-seven seconds, and we started tracking that back in twenty sixteen. And the response time to emergency calls for service is below four minutes for the first time since twenty nineteen. We've noticed a rise in mental health-related calls for service, and we responded by increasing crisis training for all of our officers, as well as specialized training for our crisis negotiation team. Our behavioral health response team continues to focus on proactive engagement with citizens before they reach the point of needing an emergency response, and our S.H.I.E.L.D. Summer Youth Program is another example of proactive engagement with some of our community's most vulnerable population. Traffic continues to be the number one citizen complaint we receive. It's a very complex issue, and we know it can't be solved by enforcement alone. It's going to require engineering changes and educational solutions developed in partnership with multiple stakeholders, which is why we have high engagement in the city's Traffic Fatality Review Task Force. And then in order to serve well, our employees need to have a high level of wellness. An expansion of our wellness program through council support and grant awards in FY twenty four allowed us to implement annual mental health check-ins for all of our employees, yoga and tactical breath work for first responders, team wellness programs, and an expansion of our peer support team. And we know that by taking care of our employees, they feel valued and have the creative energy and bandwidth to find new and better ways to serve our community and provide quality service. We appreciate the long-term capital commitments that have been made for facilities in FY twenty four with your investment. We have partnered with our Public Works Department to build a facility strategic plan, and we'll have a gap analysis report complete by this summer, which will set the groundwork for our facility strategic plan to be developed. We're also looking forward to having the recently purchased building located at State and Whitewater available for our officers to use. In technology, in FY twenty four, we entered into phase two of our technology strategic plan to optimize our current technology applications and systems to set priorities for future technology investments. In FY twenty five, our technology requests aligning with our strategic plan include replacing end-of-life technology for our crime lab, improving cellphone forensics for criminal investigations, maximizing the use of drones in the field with a drone management application and additional computer equipment for our officers working internet crimes against children. And also in equipment, we're grateful to have received a number of officer safety items and equipment in FY twenty four to help employees do their jobs more efficiently. In FY twenty five, we've requested additional safety items, including tac med supplies, i.e. field emergency medical kits, which could be used on officers and community members, and bulletproof plates for officers' vests that are rated for rifle fire. And we know the importance of this type of protection, as one of our own officers was saved by a ballistic shield just last month. So in conclusion, as an organization, we are focused on our people, on our community, and on our future. It's also our aim to serve you, and we welcome your questions anytime. And with that, I would like to say thank you for your continued support and investments in public safety. And I will stand for any questions.
Questions? Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. Last year, both the chief and fire police went through what was really needed in terms of capacity for employees. And first of all, I'm very happy to hear that, that we're going to be fully staffed, and I know that we've all worked really hard on that. Given the increases that were given to public safety last year in terms of, of police members specifically, what's the trajectory to fill that hole? And let me, let me give a little context. As I recall, Chief Weineger said, you know, there's a tipping point in, in policing where I think it's between two hundred and eighty thousand and three hundred thousand, where if you're not fully staffed for that kind of population, you're going to have, you're going to have struggles. And we in Boise are particularly vulnerable because even though we're not growing as fast as other areas in the Treasure Valley, people come to us. We're the cultural center. They come downtown. So given what we did last year, given what's in the budget this year, how long will it take to fill that gap?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Willetts, that's kind of a unique question and one that depends on a lot of variables. And so I think as we look to reach a point where we are fully staffed, we would look toward council to look at certain priorities, and we would want to assure that as we request future staffing needs, that we are in a position that we are able to fill them in the fiscal year in which we're asking for them. If that makes sense.
So maybe, Madam Mayor, what would be helpful is if staff could send that report again that was, that was given last year so we can see the total number of what was what was, what was requested, not requested, but suggested, and then we can do the math from there. Yeah, that's what I was going to suggest, because the one year they didn't request employees because they wanted to do a staffing, staffing study. That staffing study demonstrated what we needed over time. And I'd say some of the variables were listed in advance by Eric, the CLA. And, and pay influences the number of new officers we can bring on in the future as well. But yeah, so we get that study again, and that would, I think, be able to provide the answers to the questions you've got. We can discuss further in July and June. Thanks.
Madam Mayor.
Oh, yeah. I'm just going to start here and work down.
Okay, so kudos on the staffing stabilization. Thanks for the information, the presentation. As you mentioned, residents seem to express the most frustration around the traffic enforcement. And I've seen some stats that indicate that traffic citations have been on a year-over-year decline. We are making strategic improvements, as you mentioned, in the task force and with some infrastructure changes. But are we able to, I guess, are we able to allocate the resources towards traffic enforcement to turn the citation numbers around from that declining trend, or is that something that will come when we're fully staffed, or are there other considerations that I, you know, to consider?
Thank you for the question, Madam Mayor and Council Pro Temstead. There are a number of variables associated with that. The staffing is obviously one of them. It's kind of a chicken and an egg kind of thing because our traffic officers are spending a significant amount of time responding to accidents, and we're trying to prevent the accidents, and therefore, if they're not responding to accidents, then they can actually be out enforcing traffic. And so we've actually incorporated opportunities for our patrol division to engage in more traffic enforcement to help with those needs. And then as our staffing continues and we're able to put the additional officers into the traffic unit, you will see an influx in those citations as well, which we hope will, along with our work on the traffic, the traffic fatality study, work to decrease the amount of accidents and therefore getting them out there on the street. And again, not only working on education or enforcement, but education as well.
Great, thank you, Deputy Chief.
Madam Mayor, Deputy Chief Brooks, how many officers do we have strictly on, on traffic enforcement right now?
I don't know the exact number right now. I think we're approximately around fourteen.
Okay. Do we have any idea what an ideal number of officers would be for traffic enforcement? And a question, just because we have certain officers allocated to those services, are, are we, are officers getting pulled off to do other responsibilities in the police department?
So we, thank you for the question, Madam Mayor and Council President Nash. So we don't have any traffic officers that are being pulled from their duties, but we do have a couple of open vacant traffic positions of officers who are currently working in patrol and waiting to be assigned to traffic once our patrol staffing numbers have reached a viable point. And as far as the, the optimal amount of traffic officers, I don't know, but I could look into that and see what an optimal number of traffic officers for a city of our size with our population, with our amount of traffic would need.
And then one final question on this. Are there activities that our officers, sworn officers are engaging in that maybe they don't need to? So for example, a fender bender, where you're saying that we're having officers having respond to accidents. I mean, maybe you don't know how serious an accident is until you get to it. But I, I think of the types of things that we might be pulling sworn officers off the patrol, patrol to engage in, and and my wife got rear-ended in the Colan Ustic library parking lot. It was about an hour to deal with and probably not worth the officer's time, but we were grateful that we had a witness to, to this. Could you speak to that? Are you aware of any alternatives we could have to force activities like that, that sworn officers might not be the best use of their time, but still we still need some type of public servant in that situation?
So I'll say when it comes to traffic accidents, one of the areas that we can use civilian professional staff, like our community service officers, would be for traffic control, maybe at an accident. Typically, an officer responds because there is, at the time of the accident, when we determine fault, one of the drivers could be issued a citation, and that's going to be done with a sworn police officer. So they respond so they can not only investigate, but then when determining fault, could issue a citation.
Madam Mayor, I'll, I'll continue the trend of congratulating you for filling those leadership-level positions, those lieutenants and those sergeants. That's a really big deal. Congratulations. I think that that'll have a really good cascading positive impact on the rest of the people in the police department. A couple of questions. I think the first one has to do with our behavioral health response teams. You mentioned that we had a, a growing response to mental health issues and some really great training, I think, with the de-escalation and crisis response training. I'm curious about those behavioral health response teams. If we anticipate those growing, I know that we've got one of our most beloved officers, Blake Slater, leaving here pretty soon. He's one of the first members of those teams. And so I'm wondering if you could just speak to the growth or the need for growth in those behavioral health response teams?
Thank you for the question, Madam Mayor and Councilmember Hallie Burton. Yes, the retirement, the upcoming retirement of Officer Blake Slater is going to be a huge blow to our behavioral health response team. We are looking to fill that position, and we also have another vacant position in which when our staffing increases, we intend on filling as well. So we definitely see the need and want to put those resources out to the community so that they can be utilized again in a proactive way to help people receive help prior to reaching a point in which they're in an emergency crisis.
Great. Over the, over the years that I've been here on city council, we've approved increases to that behavioral health response team. I don't know that we've necessarily seen the impact that that's had. My hope is that like by, by having them engage early, they're taking things off other officers' plates so they can engage. It would be nice, I think, for us as a council to know the impact of those behavioral health response teams that we've approved in the past, if they're working well, if that's a model that we want to continue to explore. So that might be something that would be nice to have in the future. And then just one comment. I'm happy to see that both you and fire are looking at sort of a response evolution, and I think to Council President Nash's questions, there's probably some things that we can be looking at strategically to figure out where do we need our folks the most, knowing that there's more and more complicated responses that people are arriving to, and how can we make sure that we're prioritizing those things that you all know that you have to be at, and trying to figure out what other options or opportunities, be it technology, be it non-sworn officers, you know, within the department or other areas that we can explore. So I would welcome that conversation going forward as well. And again, just relay the, the good job with the call times, the filling the positions and the work that you're doing.
Great, thank you.
Madam Mayor, Chief Deputy Brooks, thank you very much for the presentation today, and I appreciate your hard work and the hard work of the department to help fill all those vacant positions in leadership, not an easy task, I'm sure. Also for bringing down the response times for the non-emergency and emergency calls under four minutes. My question is, I also appreciate the data-driven approach to the organization because I think that's really going to inform the decisions on where we do need to put people next. And the use of technology. You had mentioned drones, and I'm wondering how many people within the police department are certified on using drones, and do you see that as a field that's going to continue to grow in use of that technology?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Corliss, thank you for that question. The short answer is yes. I, I do believe that our drone program has a number of benefits that have not only served as an officer's safety benefit to, to our officers who are responding to dangerous calls for service, but also enabling us to work in times as a force multiplier. And I'll give an example of when we had a, a missing child, and we knew a particular area in which the child was located. We were able to send a, a drone operator out to the scene and allow them to search a wider area in a faster and shorter amount of time, enabling us to locate the child faster and put the officers, you know, back in service in a more timely manner as well. So as far as the number of operators we have, I, I don't have the exact number. I do know that we just recently put out a request to seek additional drone operators in the department with our goal of trying to have a drone available twenty-four- With our goal of trying to have a drone available twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. So depending, regardless of what shift is on, that we have that technology available to them.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. I will turn it over to Chief Gervais.
Well, good morning again, uh, Madam Mayor, Members of Council, Romeo Gervais with Boise Fire. To start with, we wanted to cover, I wanted to cover a little bit about fiscal year twenty-four and our investments and impacts. And, um, as I was sitting there in the audience and, and hearing the other departments discuss Station Five and Station Thirteen. It really did remind me how much it takes the entire city, um, and the support of all the other departments to make those projects a reality. So, um, if I may, I just wanted to say thank you to them, um, for their support a- and getting those stations built. A- as you know, Station Five is being rebuilt. Um, we have an estimated opening of October of this year. So we're excited to get that filled, uh, and reopened and kind of that photo on the lower left. Uh, if you haven't seen the station, it is a beautiful station and, uh, really respectful architecture of, uh, historical nature. And, uh, we're very excited to have that reopened. Um, in addition to that, Station Thirteen is under construction. Um, we anticipate a late spring, early summer, a twenty-five opening of that. Um, and as you can see there in the lower right photo, um, once again, I think that's going to be a great station too. Really a welcoming component to the city as you're coming into the city of Boise on State Street. So, uh, both those, those stations are under construction. We're excited for those. Um, last year, we also did, uh, we were able to add a couple of recruit academies. So I'll cover that a little bit more in our presentation, but as we talk about workforce stabilization. Uh, it was important to not only do our annual, uh, kind of January academy, but add a second academy, which will be starting later this year. So we appreciate the support for that, um, predominantly to, to staff Station Thirteen, but also to, and, uh, basically handle some of our retirements. Things like that. In addition to that, we, we are excited to, uh, have four-person staffing at Station Fifteen. So that should be going into effect June, July timeframe. We're just waiting for the recruits from this last class to finish kind of their, uh, FTO training, if you will. Or their field training, if you will, out at the stations, which they're all completing right now. So that'll be the first for the city to have that four-person engine company up and running. And we're very excited to see that out, uh, in our eastern, eastern areas of the city. Um, in addition to that, we did a number of different mental and wellness, uh, components last year in fiscal year twenty-four. Um, predominantly in the mental health component, we, we increased a number of different training opportunities. And we have, uh, a conference, if you will, that's coming up, bringing in speakers from around the country with, uh, we're, we're super excited to see that coming. Um, from a physical standpoint, we were able to upgrade three of our stations with new equipment. Um, to really make sure that our folks can continue to work out and, and maintain that physical, uh, wellness. And then we were also able to add, uh, the similar equipment out at our training center. So as our new recruits come on board, we can train them in appropriate ways for physical fitness, um, which hopefully will reduce injuries and things like that as we go further down the line. Moving into fiscal year twenty-five, um, wi- with kind of the focus on response evolution. Um, one of the first things that we're, we're looking at this year is station alerting. Um, station alerting has been a topic as long as I've been with the department. Um, and what that really allows us to do is, uh, to notify our stations of particular calls for service when they come in. The real focus of this is to reduce our alerting times to get the trucks on the street quicker, um, as well as, uh, alerting only the units needed. So in our multi-company houses, for example, um, the entire station goes off. So instead of waking up the truck and the engine and the ambulance, we can only wake up the particular unit required. So once again, kind of getting back to that mental health and wellness components for our firefighters. Um, the initial package for that is being installed by Ada County. Um, and this funding will allow us to upgrade the stations as we go, really kind of focus on, um, additional components of that system. To make it even more efficient and more effective. Station Five and Station Thirteen, if we build those out, will be fully outfitted. So we're excited to see that. Station Five, uh, once that gets built, you can come out and tour and take a look at that station alerting system. Um, as we mentioned with Station Fifteen, uh, Station Thirteen will also be a four-person staff station. Um, so we're excited for that as we build that out, um, to really have that fourth person up in, uh, Northwest Boise. Um, air monitors, so, uh, air monitors allow us to monitor different, uh, components or gases in the air. Um, so as we respond out, even just yesterday, we had a hydrogen sulfide call, um, where the, the, the crews were able to use, uh, these air monitors. Um, and detect hydrogen sulfide and make a quick response to remove that from that business. These components, these, this new technology is, is a real-time data technology. Uh, and it also has expanded, we've expanded it to all of our apparatus. Previously, it was unlimited apparatus or hazmat teams in our truck companies. Um, now our engine companies are able to do that same air monitoring. So not only for hydrogen sulfide, but think carbon monoxide, different things like that, carbon dioxide, even with some of our beverage dispensing systems, things like that. Um, the next bullet there, as far as twenty-five requests is our access contract. Um, access is our Ada County Emergency Services System. So that's that component where we work collaboratively with the neighboring jurisdictions, uh, as well as Ada County, uh, paramedics. To really respond collaboratively, um, and respond appropriately and then share resources where we can. So that's a twenty-five request. Moving on, capital investment and, uh, planning. Um, a- as we mentioned before, as Eric mentioned earlier, with some of the increases in costs and inflation, we are seeing some, um, fleet increases. Uh, we use our fleet department here in the city and they do a great job with us maintaining our apparatus and fleet, uh, but those costs are continuing to increase. Um, the next one really there is the dive van upgrade. Our current dive van is a two thousand and six unit and it's just not, uh, functional for our existing services that we provide. Um, we continue to see, uh, calls for the service throughout, um, the community with our dive response. Whether it be a swift water rescue, a river rescue, or, or our dive rescue. This new piece of apparatus will really help us support those activities. Um, and one of the big things that'll allow us to do is provide some additional changing facilities for our folks. So with this new piece of equipment, it'll encourage that diverse team, um, where it allows them to change for those types of calls. The next one that we, we have here for our twenty-five request is workforce stabilization. Um, we traditionally have always run one academy a year and as we mentioned a little bit earlier, we're running two this year. Um, that academy happens to span the fiscal year twenty-four and the fiscal year twenty-five budgets. So we have half of the budget budgeted in twenty-four as well as this half in twenty-five. Um, these, these academies will really, uh, allow us to staff Station Thirteen as well as encompass our retirements. Um, so I, you know, one of the, I guess, the key parts or pieces with that is, uh, we graduated about twenty in May of twenty-four. Um, we'll graduate twenty-two in November of twenty-four. And then we plan to graduate another ten in May of twenty-five. So those are kind of our upcoming academies in twenty-four and twenty-five. Um, the next component down there for twenty-five request is a tech dive consolidation. So we are working really to improve efficiency of our teams. So we have a number of different specialty teams on the department, whether it be technical rescue, dive rescue, uh, aircraft firefighting. Um, or our hazmat teams. Um, but really looking at how do we coordinate and consolidate those tech and dive teams together to improve efficiency, cross-train resources where appropriate? And that's really what this funding will support is, is cross-training those team members so that they can effectively function as a tech and or dive member, um, as appropriate. The next one there really is recruit programming. Um, we were lucky enough in twenty-four to be awarded this as one-time funding. Um, and this request will extend that to an ongoing funding source so we can continue our recruitment efforts. We've seen a number of different recruitment activities over the last year where we've gone out and been able to recruit people. Uh, in years past, we didn't have to recruit as much. Um, and as we continue to see our numbers of applications go down, um, we want to make sure that we keep those numbers up. And keep those numbers diverse as well. So make sure we're recruiting to the right people at the right place. And really making sure that we're getting the best people for the job. And, and I can tell you, these last two classes, um, our new recruits are incredible. Uh, I, I probably wouldn't have made the cut when I, if I would have been in their shoes. Um, they, they are just all rock stars. Um, they, they do tremendous work and, uh, the competition is fierce. With that, I would stand for any questions.
Counsel.
Mr. President. Um, Chief, thank you for the presentation. A couple of questions, uh, about the recruit programming. I think that there's a photo here that, that kind of speaks to some of the work that you're, you've been doing. Um, I know that you're doing some specific training and outreach stuff to kind of get more women involved, um, in the recruitment process. And I'm wondering if you could speak to that a little bit more.
Yeah, great question, uh, Council President and Councilmember Hallie Burton. Um, we do have a number of different recruitment activities. Uh, as you can see from that picture, we, we do run a couple of youth camps. Um, with a women-centric camp, if you will, and a young women-centric camp. So we've had some great success with that. Um, I believe both of them filled up within one day of their opening. Um, and I believe we have the first one from, uh, that academy that we've just hired in this last group. Several of them have also been hired by other agencies in the valley. So once again, really looking at how do we, you know, focus on the fire service as a whole. So that is one component that we've done. Um, we've also spent a lot of time working with Boise State University and their athletes program. Um, their athletes are, uh, excellent, um, motivated. They are, they are really a focus that we, we look at to say they have the right values and, uh, I would say work ethic, if you will, to come to Boise Fire. So we've spent a number of time or a lot of time with those groups. We've attended different things like that. Uh, as well as just attending various events, whether it be, uh, high school career fairs, things like that. And really trying to, to promote it from that aspects.
Yeah, I, I appreciate the efforts that you're doing there. I think it's really important that we continue to figure out what we can do to recruit. Um, and get more people into the academy, um, that are, that are female candidates. Um, and you all, I think, are doing a good job with that. And that's probably something I think that can be shared with some of our other departments that are lacking in diversity that we want to see. Um, I, I guess one comment. You know, when I was doing more transportation advocacy, sometimes we would start with, uh, um, experimenting on stuff over at Boise State University. It was sort of a city of its own and we could try physical infrastructure there before we would start pushing it at the city or Ada County. Um, one of the things that your team does so well and that I want to continue to make sure I'm advocating for is the mental health and wellness. Um, that you offer for your employees, um, both as they're coming on board, you know, once they've been there and even after they're retired. And I guess my ask is that as we continue to invest, which I'm committed to doing in mental health and wellness at the fire department. Um, that you all continue to share that with the rest of the departments as well. I think the fire department and probably the library are doing, um, more in that area than some of our other departments. And I think that there's really some lessons to be learned. Um, so as you continue to build out that program and you're learning those lessons, I would really love to see how we can make sure that we're sharing that across, um, all of our departments. Cause I think while there's maybe some differences when it comes to the workout room, you know, there, there's probably a lot of other things that cross over pretty well. Um, and then the last thing I just want to, uh, thank you for is, um, you know, it seems small, but the, the alerting is a pretty big deal. I used to work at Eagle and you'd get woken up about, you know, ten times at night and every single time your heart rate would spike. And you'd have a hard time going back to sleep and, and those things make a, make a difference. So, um, keep exploring those areas as well.
Madam Mayor, um, I, again, thank you again. I'll echo the comments on the diversity recruitment and recruitment in general. I know that's really important and we want great candidates and it sounds like you're really putting in the work to find those. It'll be fun to see kind of over the years, um, as those efforts pay off, you know, to see the numbers on, um, what the new classes are looking like. And I had the privilege to attend the recent academy graduation, um, and there are some really wonderful recruits. It was really fun to chat with them and, um, see the pride that they have and the pride that their families had for them. Um, I have a question, what other, um, this is something I'll ask of some other departments too. But what kind of concessions were made, I guess, in this ask for this year's budget? Are there other things that were, you know, that were, you were struggling to prioritize that fell off the list this year? Um, that we might see on the list again coming up in, in future years?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, uh, Council Pro Tem Sted, um, absolutely. Um, we have a robust ten-year strategic plan for Fire, which lays out all of our needs over the next ten years. To really, uh, enhance and improve staffing and safety of our community. So, um, with that in mind, we will continue to work towards that goal of completing that ten-year strategic plan. And, and that's probably the best answer I could say for you is I, I can provide you that strategic plan we updated on an annual basis. And the asks we don't get this year, we look at next year and say, is this a priority for next year still? Yes, it is. We're going to continue to ask for that. So, um, w- we have a roadmap, if you will. Um, we'll continue to adjust that roadmap depending upon, um, stop signs or yield signs or, or different things along the way. Um, but we're very excited. I mean, it's, it's a huge, huge win for us to get that Fire Station Thirteen opened in our northwest with four-person staffing. So we're very appreciative of, uh, the resources that are, uh, being requested in this budget.
Thank you so much.
Madam Mayor, I guess I do have one more request. Um, lots of requests for me. As we do look at that response evolution, looking at technology, looking at, um, you know, civilian level positions. I would ask that the fire department help lead that discussion with the police department, um, and across the board as well. I think that right now there's such a huge opportunity to be re-looking at technology, to be re-looking at civilian positions, see where things fit. Um, and you always are so great at doing those things. So I would request that you, um, be an active part of that conversation. I know you already are.
Madam Mayor, one quick question. Fire Chief, thank you very much for the presentation and for the hard work that you guys are doing. Uh, it's, I'm glad to hear about the ten-year strategic plan and would love to see that. On the recruiting, do you guys also recruit with the Boise Police Department and EMS? Or is it a recruitment just for Fire Department? Thank you.
Madam Mayor, uh, Councilmember Corliss, we do overlap in some particular activities. Um, and we certainly coordinate as far as cross, uh, across paths. Um, I would say many of our activities are individualized in the sense of delivery, but we do coordinate, uh, and, and talk, um, back and forth. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we've got Steve again, Planning and Development Services.
Good morning, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. Thanks for having me back. Um, Steve Burgus, I'm serving as the interim Planning and Development Services Director. And we jump into those slides. So within PDS, we've got three primary priorities, uh, moving forward. We've got about, uh, elevating the community experience. So hopefully, as folks are coming into PDS, they're feeling like they've got a, a really good business process they're getting put through to get through permits, get through, um, planning and zoning. Advancing design and development, that's related to the modern zoning code. So implementation of the modern zoning code is really the, the talk of the department, making sure that we're following through on the implementation side. And then investing in permanent supportive housing, uh, this is a topic that is a high prior from, high priority for mayor and council. I understand that as well as a very technical talk, topic. So I'm going to turn it over to Maureen Brewer to give you more details on the, the housing piece, uh, in particular, when we get to that point. So for FY twenty-four, uh, in Planning and Development Services, talking about the enhanced community experience related to permitting and inspections. Um, some examples of some of the work that's happened in twenty-four, we've updated our service level agreements within, internally within this, the city. To make sure we have alignment on turnaround times and who's doing what. Um, we've got an updated website, uh, for the building trade inspection guidelines. Our plan review timeframes, we're excited to share, is averaging about eight point five-five days, uh, for first review. That's down four to five days from averages over FY twenty-one and twenty-two. That's a credit to Jason Blaze and the team, really getting issues addressed and showing real market improvement. And I mentioned during the Public Works presentation, the permitting fee cost of study, cost of service study. That just kicked off last week with our consultant team. Again, that's a, a very important study that is trying to frame up the actual compensation for the services provided within PDS. We have not revisited that since two thousand and nine. On the Modern Zoning Code Implementation and Pathways Projects, uh, we're making investments to support the implementation of the code. Things like, um, illustrated user guides to try to make it as easy as possible folks, for folks to try to interpret the modern zoning code. And down at the bottom, you see the funding to advance the two pathways projects through initial design. That'll be happening this year, um, and wrapping those up so that they're shovel-ready at the end of the year.
Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, Steve, could you go back to the slide? So you'd said we have two pathways projects that are funded with design in this fiscal year, but we expect them to be shovel-ready. In fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, am I correct that those both are currently unfunded as far as, uh, the development of those pathways?
Madam Mayor, uh, Council President Nash, that's correct. We have, they'll be shovel-ready, but we haven't identified a source of funding yet for FY twenty-five.
And do we have an, uh, do we have figures on what the cost of those projects might be?
I'd have to get back to you on the con-.
I'd be interested.
And then moving on to FY twenty-five request and impact, um, on the people's side, we, we, we are getting one FT. We really appreciate that. That is really focused on, um, implementation of the modern zoning code and increasing our customer intake. And on the process side, focused almost exclusively, I shouldn't say exclusively, but mo- mostly focused on the modern zoning code implementation. I mentioned trying to get, uh, more information out to folks that are applying to make it, uh, simpler for them to navigate. And then we also have the neighborhood housing incentives illustrated guide for residents. So again, trying to better communicate with community, both on modern zoning code and the services that PDS provides, um, through some of those guides that you see on the slide. And at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Maureen, um, to give us an overview of, uh, both twenty-four, uh, on the housing and community development side. As well as what we're looking forward to twenty-five.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Maureen Brewer, I lead our Housing and Community Development Division. Was just going to share a couple of brief slides, um, one about the impact that we have had in the housing and homelessness space um this fiscal year, and then a quick look into what we're setting up for fiscal year 2025. So in the homelessness space and homeless services response, the team has been working really hard to create the Supportive Housing Investment Fund. Uh, this fund will be or is established at the Idaho Community Foundation um and will support the site-based permanent supportive housing projects that the city and in partnership with our PATH Home has coming online. We also anticipate closing, doing the financial closing for new PATH 2.0 in mid-July and construction will start shortly thereafter. And then just a brief reminder that among the affordable housing projects in the city's pipeline, we are dedicating 10% of units to households exiting homelessness in each of those projects. On the affordable housing side, particularly um construction of new affordable housing, we will begin to lease up the Franklin, which is 184 units of affordable housing, starting in June. That lease up will continue into the summer and probably finish up in the September timeframe. And then uh the construction of both Wilson Station on State Street and then Denton over by um the St. Alphonsus Campus is ongoing. So then if we look into 2025, FY 2025, with additional investments in housing, we are poised to meet or exceed our goals to create 250 units of permanent supportive housing and 1,250 units of affordable housing. We will plan to do that via one more permanent supportive housing project, likely in partnership with the Boise Housing Authority, and then two more affordable housing projects. We are also ready, um, or will be ready in FY 25 to begin construction of McKinney, which will be over 200 units of affordable housing. Um, and Lusk Street should be ready uh to start construction uh roughly next summer. And that will be 300, 350 plus units of affordable housing. We will also start on the rehabilitation of the Park Apartments, 48 units for families exiting homelessness. That rehabilitation should start in calendar year 2025 and conclude by the end of the year. Happy to answer any questions you all might have.
Madam Mayor, just one comment. Maureen, I just want to thank you and your team. You are a small and mighty team standing up some affordable housing. Thank you for all your work.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Maureen, thank you so much. You do a lot in the community and we appreciate it. Um, on the permanent supportive housing project that, that might be partnered, uh, where would the funding potentially come from that?
Uh, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Willetts, um, not unlike we do on the other affordable housing projects or permit supportive housing projects, we'll put a capital stack together in partnership with resources from primarily Idaho Housing and Finance Association, but also the Housing Authority. And then I anticipate there will be a city contribution as well.
Thank you.
Wait, Steve, you're just leaving?
Madam Mayor, that, uh, wrapped by PDS.
Um, are there any?
Any final questions?
Steve's so done with this two-department job.
I have a question. Uh, Steve, thank you for your capable leadership. Um, Madam Mayor, when do we expect for Steve to be able to take a break and just have one job and not two?
I, I assure you, you will not see him twice in, in the next budget presentation.
I'm going to hold there too, there.
No, there's um, we're, position's open now. I, I believe in June, um, interviews will start.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Um, I'll ask the same questions, Steve. Um, are, were there concessions that had to be made on this budget ask that, you know, that are maybe earmarked for the next one? Or I guess, how do you make these prioritization decisions of, of what you're choosing here?
Um, Madam Mayor, Councilmember, so I appreciate that question. Um, I don't think there are any concessions made, um, working with the staff. But first of all, they are very capable. Um, and I feel like I'm just here to keep the momentum going and remove hurdles where they come up for, for the interim. Um, so we worked with staff, they came up with the priorities, um, and we worked out through the budget office. I feel like we're, we're in good shape. You know, there's always areas we could, we could use more, of course. But um, I feel like the staff really came up with a good group of priorities focused on the modern zoning code. And it's landing in the right spot. And then Maureen and the housing team, they are, I mean, they're amazing. So I think we're in a good spot.
Madam Mayor.
Mm-hmm.
Um, Steve, good to see you again. Um, and congratulations on uh, um, jumping in there and working on getting some of those timeframes down on the review. Um, I know that you've had a lot of help with staff and you won't take credit for it. But uh, um, again, I appreciate all the hard work from everyone over there. Um, one question about that, um, eight point five is great, um, I think. Um, is that the goal? Um, do you know if there's a goal for what you're trying to get the review time down to?
Um, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Halliburton, I had precious little to do with it. Uh, let me find out for you if there's a specific goal we're shooting for. I just know it's down to eight point five. Um, there, there probably is a number we're looking at.
Great. And I know that you're sort of in a tough spot here since you weren't in the department last year. Do you know how many FTEs you all got last year?
I don't. Um, Madam Mayor, Councilmember, I can find that for you.
Great. Um, I think one of the questions that, that I've got, frankly, I was a little surprised to see that there was only, I think it was point seven or one FTE going to PDS. I think I had maybe anticipated a little bit more with the new zoning code. I didn't know if that was going to have an impact or not. Um, again, I'm not 100% sure with the organizational restructuring that we're doing with the four employees, if that may have an impact on some of the housing team. I think it maybe does, but I'm not 100% sure. Um, I want to make sure that PDS has the, has the folks that it needs. And so I think kind of hearing back more about some of those FTEs where they're going, I think would be helpful.
And just as a follow-up that too, I think it was mid-budget last year, if not at the budget cycle, Eric probably remembers. We added quite a few folks to PDS. And based on the revenues we expected from Micron, so we could shift responsibilities to those specific people and open up space um within PDS staff for the other business of the city.
Great.
And I would add, Madam Mayor and Councilmember, I think the team, as we start to implement, implement the modern zoning code, there's a part of it is let's, let's see how this plays out. We're so early in the process. I think next year we'll have a better sense for where the gaps are and where the needs are. Um, and, and, and come back with potentially more requests.
Great. I appreciate that. And I think that that's something for us as council, just to keep an eye on. We've got this new zoning code and we want to make sure that we're doing it well for our community members. Um, trying to make sure that we're supportive of that review time goal, whatever it is that you're, you all are trying to hit. And that we recognize that, you know, sometimes it, it potentially takes staff to do that and we've got them in the right spot. Um, I will sort of second a request, I think, from Council President, uh, Nash. Um, I think earlier in the year, when we were talking about some budget priorities, we were really looking at a couple of projects and really trying to figure out if there was more that we could do um when it comes to the pathways plan, as well as if there is a need for, um, and should we be finding space for general funds to look at continued maintenance um and management of these pathways? So I think that that's a conversation that we're probably going to want to explore a little bit more as we get to sort of this final budget process. Um, is there more that we can do in this area? Um, and you know, where those locations might be? Again, don't expect you to have um answers for that right now, but appreciate all the hard work.
Madam Mayor. Uh, Steve, are you fully staffed up on planners? Are there vacancies?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Nash, I don't think we are. I'd have to go back and check. Um, I, we're, we're not. Um, we were close, uh, but we had a recent uh change. So I can go back and find out where we are. Uh, but I know we're not fully staffed, we're close, but, but there's a, I know there's at least one vacancy, maybe more.
Madam Mayor, Steve, I know this, this won't be your problem to solve, but I want to put this out here from a policy perspective, that there are states that are requiring cities and particularly planning departments to turn permits quicker because of the inflationary market that we're in and time is money. And so I think we need to be aware that that may come to Idaho and what that looks like so that we, we have the data to present how it, it's what we're already doing in Boise before we get a request for that information.
Thank you for that.
All right, thank you.
Now I can go.
Now you can go.
Thank you, ma'am.
Did Eric have something? Eric popped up. Nope, okay. All right, and I saw Jamie, that, that, there's Jamie. We're going to keep going until 11:30, so Parks is on deck.
Hello, um, Madam Mayor, Members of Council, I'm Jamie Sullivan. I'm the city attorney. And as you know, you don't often see legal on this side of the dais and council chambers, but that doesn't mean we are not active in the courtroom and behind the scenes. Legal consists of three central divisions. First, we have the municipal division. It serves the city throughout all of the departments, internal and external facing alike, from DFA and HR to the airport into the parks. It supports mayor and council initiatives, as well as city boards and commissions, and intergovernmental support even when the legislative session comes to an end. We also have the Public Safety Division, supporting Boise's police and fire departments and their endeavors to keep our communities safe, as well as provides litigation support for the city. And finally, we have the largest division, the Criminal Division. We prosecute misdemeanor and infraction cases for the city of Boise and also the city of Meridian on contract, as well as conflict felony cases throughout the Treasure Valley. And like the Municipal Division, the Criminal Division runs a clinic for law students. And actually, they started yesterday. So I wanted to talk a bit about uh the FY 24 legal investments in people and assets and process and how they have supported the city's accomplishments. So last year, the Municipal Division uh completed 42 ordinances, impacted 732 resolutions and supported over 122 public meetings. As the external departments celebrate their accomplishments from strides towards 10-minute walks to parks, innovative affordable housing projects and implementation of the modern zoning code, Legal shares in those successes by providing solid legal guidance and strategic support throughout the city. The Criminal Division ensured that our community received justice by prosecuting just shy of 10,000 cases last year. And that division averages two to three jury trials a week. We also give back again to the legal community by collaborating with the University of Idaho by hosting the criminal interns, giving them the boots-on-the-ground training and experience that will serve them to serve our community in the future. And that takes us to your uh FY 24 investments in people, assets and process, and the steps that Legal has taken to realize strategic goals to better serve the city. With respect to people, last year I requested to expand the Public Safety Division to address current litigation needs as well as build capacity for the future. As our community grows, so does the complexity and number of legal matters that confront the city. Simply put, we need to grow the division to keep up with the needs of the city. Since that time, we have not only utilized the additional FTE, but have looked inward and repurposed service lines to address the increasing needs of litigation, whether it be risk advice, in-house litigation, outside council management, employee relations, grievances, HUD matters, human rights complaints, evictions and collections. The Legal Department continues to evolve to meet the needs of the city. With respect to process, we requested a continued investment in citywide investigations. And I'm happy to report these centralized resources provide services throughout the city in a variety of contexts. We have been able to utilize this resource to ensure regulatory compliance, address conflicts, tackle backlog and minimize liability while ensuring consistency, quality and effect and um efficacy and fact-finding. This fund has been used in the area of ADA compliance, HR investigations, internal affairs and civil litigation. And finally, Legal asked for an investment in assets. Access to public information is a vital tenant of good governance. Last year, Legal alone processed just shy of 15,000 public records throughout the police and municipal portals. And through your investment last year, the city was enabled to take a more global view of the needs of the community outside of the city silos. And currently, Legal is working with the mayor's office on an initiative to better inform our community. A new public records platform will benefit the community and staff alike by ensuring consistency, efficiency and regulatory compliance. This citywide initiative will further the city's commitment to support the public's right to be informed of the city's business and enhance the user experience with faster response times, greater transparency and ease of use. So again, thank you for your time and attention here today. We appreciate your continued support, which enables us in turn to support the city move forward. And without a stand for any questions.
Madam Mayor, Jamie, thank you for your presentation. Um, I just had some questions about what type of staffing issues, if any, that you're seeing in the, your department? And uh, if that's weighing heavily on one particular division over another?
And Madam Mayor, uh, Councilmember, or Council, uh, I am so sorry, Council President Nash. Um, yes, uh, we have been uh experiencing some overture or turnover, rather, in the Criminal Division. That's consistent with a trend uh not only statewide, but uh nationwide as well. I am happy to report that by August 1st, we intend to be fully staffed. We have people lined up to um, to take those roles.
Madam Mayor, um, Jamie, have you ever, has your division ever put out anything on um, like a report on what types of criminal convictions that? Um, I mean, I know, I know you're doing misdemeanors and infractions, but um, I'd, I'd be interested in some report to show what the bulk of your work is related to these criminal convictions. What, are there one particular crime over another? Um, are there, are there crimes on our books that are going regularly uncharged? Um, I, I would be interested in, in what type of work that we're actually seeing out of our Criminal Division.
And um, Madam Mayor, Council, uh, President Nash, I'll be happy to provide that information. I can also tell you, as you know, the investment that you provided to Legal with the, the prosecutor system, we were able to track statistics much more efficiently than we have been in the past.
Madam Mayor, um, Jamie, thanks for the presentation. Uh, so a couple of questions about the public records requesting. 15,000 seems like a lot and I really do appreciate that you brought up uh how important it is that the public have access to everything that we're working on. I could not agree more. Um, is that number going up? Is that number going down? Is it staying consistent? What is, what's the trend looking like for public records requests?
And um, Madam Mayor, uh, Councilmember Halliburton, I believe this year, I can pull the numbers from last year. I know we had a huge spike last year by like 5,000, if, if memory serves. I think we've kind of uh plateaued at this point. But I uh, over, over time, again, as the city grows, so do the, uh, the requests that come in.
Great. And so tell me if my understanding is correct, sort of about what we're doing here is our, our goal with um transparency and efficiency is that we make more information available and easy to find for the public. So it takes us less time to go and find it for them? Or, or how is that working with the, um, the technology investment that we're doing with these types of requests?
Um, and Madam Mayor, Councilmember Halliburton, uh, yes, uh, one, having a, a centralized location for, it, it's a, it's a big, it's a big process with a, a lot of tentacles. Um, but the city is looking to uh mature its process so that we are able to uh be more efficient uh and consistent uh in our responses.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I think that that's one of my hopes and I think that we are already seeing that with OPA. Um, is that as we're putting more information out there and making it more public available, that hopefully there's a less, um, less of a need to go out there and, and to be requesting that information all the time. Um, I think it's certainly a challenge and, and, you know, again, I think that it's so important that people have the access and the ability to do it. And I also think it takes a tremendous amount of, of time um and effort. And I always kind of wonder like, what if we had that time and effort to be put to, to some other things? And so if there's ways that we can continue um with that, those efforts of transparency and using technology to make that much easier for folks and making information available that people might be looking for and requesting to me, that's a better use of our, our time. So thanks for the efforts there.
Madam Mayor, Jamie, thanks. I know in the FY 23 budget, there were several positions that were added. Um, for this particular budget, can you call out any sort of positions and any sort of um process, technology, investments that we can expect to see in the final budget by, by specificity? In other words, you've given us a, a really great overview. In other words, you've given us a really great overview, is there anything new we're going to see in this fiscal year?
Okay, thank you. And Madam Mayor, Councilmember Willetts, Legal is not specifically asking for any additional FTEs this year.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now we've got Doug Holloway with Parks.
Good morning, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, Doug Holloway, Parks and Recreation. I did ask Steve Burgos if he wanted to just keep going and do Parks and Rec as well, but he politely declined, so you've got me. Again, thank you for the opportunity to talk about what we've done in '24 and what are proposed moving into '25, we see in Parks and Recreation. In '23, '24, and then even moving into '25, we really have made accessibility one of our primary focuses. And you see that in some of the play features that we're replacing around the city and have done in '23 and '24, and what we're proposing in '25, to add more accessible features to those. You see, we're doing Hewitt Park Playground and some pathway upgrades this year. You're familiar with what occurred, the vandalism, unfortunate vandalism at the Castle Hills Playground a couple of months ago. The silver lining to that is that play facility did not have any accessible features, and so the fact we're adding a new playground that will have those components is a big addition to that neighborhood. And to tell you how excited they are, we did do a tremendous amount of outreach with a couple of different designs for the neighborhood to vote on, and we had more than 1,100 folks that responded to that design opportunity and engagement. So they're waiting for their playground, we will get that done. We'll start in '24, and it'll probably take somewhere in the nine to 12-month time period to get that done. We're also proposing some additional safety improvements along the Willow Lane Athletic Complex and the Willow Lane Park, some lighting along the Green Belt, and also making some just overall visibility improvements to Willow Lane. We have some berms there that hinder some of the site, line of sight for our enforcement folks, so we'll be looking at making some changes there. And then we're adding an urban restroom facility at Road Skate Park, and that facility will be similar than, similar in concept to what you see at Sheree Buckner Webb. Some of our access improvements to Recreation, as you're aware, we do have a new facility going at the Warren Springs Golf Course, our grill and golf facility. This is really more of a community facility in addition to housing our clubhouse at that location. We actually have our groundbreaking ceremony on Thursday morning at 11 o'clock to dedicate that. And then, we also started something new this year with our registration process. Most of the ongoing camps and activities we have throughout the summer, you had to prepay in advance if you wanted to schedule in advance to have something like, for example, our Play Camp every single week through the summer. We did, our system required that all to be paid upfront. We were able to work with our vendor and actually create an installment plan, and I'm pleased to announce that on opening day of registration, we had just over $100,000 of folks that took advantage of that installment plan. So we feel like we really hit a note there on creating better access to, particularly to that Play Camp program. We have some improvements at the auditorium, and we're adding a new urban restroom also to CW Moore Park, again, very similar to Rhodes and Sheree Buckner Webb. And then we have a number of parking lot resurfacing projects around the city, not real sexy, but people need safe places to park as well when they visit our different facilities. Some of the impacts in our programming side, as I mentioned a little bit about our Play Camp, our after-school program is what we refer to as our Kids City Program, and that is where we have embedded community centers in Title I schools in the Boise School District. We do have one in the West Ada School District, and we're proposing in 2025 to have a second Kids City Center in the West Ada School District. We're working closely with their leadership to identify the highest-need elementary school that would work in that, in that district. This past year, actually year-to-date, so from August 2, April 30, we've had over 66,000 visits to those nine Kids City locations, and that works out just for an idea, and those nine locations, somewhere between 50 and 60 kids per day that we are seeing. And again, these are in Title I schools, so this is our market, this is our demographic, these are the children that we want to reach, that we feel, for the most part, would not have a place to go after school. Our Play Camp program that I mentioned, that we have at nine city parks, that's our 11-week affordable summer, basically, that's our daycare program that we have in the summer. And we've had some phenomenal success in filling those numbers. Three years ago, I'm going to say, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers, I think we were at seven, six sites, so we've added three more sites in this last three years. We also are proposing to add a 10th location in fiscal year 2025, and we're looking specifically in the southwest part of our city. We do use our 10-minute walk initiative to identify potential new locations. We also are looking at the new zoning code and where we feel that some of that dense development is going to occur, we're focusing on those areas as well. We had, we released our activity guide this past March, and we have, as you see, 1,234 activities in that, and that encompasses about 524-ish different fees and charges. So there's a lot of things that are going on in that guide, and it serves all of our communities, so there's all kinds of access there that we feel we are hitting the demographic that you, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers, want to see us hit. On opening day registration, this is something that we have not experienced before. We, in the first day of registration, we, as you see the number, we had almost 9,700 enrollments in that day, and real close to $700,000 in total revenue, just in that one day. When we break it out, we had, of that 9,688, we had over 7,100 of that number in the first hour of registration, and most of those were in our Play Camp program. And so again, to give you an idea of how we did this, how we did last year, the entire day, we had about 5,100 total registrations in the entire day. So we almost doubled that with the 9,688, but we by far exceeded it in one hour. We also did about $972,000 in registration in that first hour, and we only did $916,000 in the entire day last year. So we've hit a note here as well. We know that that summer daycare program is very well-priced, it is a high-quality program, and it's one that, as we mentioned in '25, we need to add another location, and there are some restrictions on where we can go with that. I just want to make sure that as you are hearing, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, from the public about what they may or may not have been able to get as far as where they wanted their children to go this, this summer, we're cognizant of that, we're working on that, and we're looking at suitable locations where we can add more opportunities. But again, staffing is always too going to be a key to being able to add new locations. Our picnic in the park, this is our summer feeding program, we work closely with the Boise School District, they provide the meals, our team delivers those meals at four different park sites, and we did, you know, 5,831 of those lunches this past, this past summer, and these are free, completely free, families, children, anyone is eligible, there is no income requirement. Any of those four park locations, you show up and at lunchtime, and you get a free, get a free lunch. And again, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, I know you're all very familiar with our scholarship program. This is what allows us to make sure that whoever wants to participate, they get to participate, right? So we do not turn anyone away for a lack or ability to be able to pay. Last year, we did 16,487 scholarship activities for our residents, so that's both youth, families, and also seniors and those with, that are in our adventure program. And then just a quick rundown of some of our key revenue generating facilities, we saw about 1.1 million visits between Zoo, both golf courses, and Idaho Ice World, and that, those 1.1 visits generated about seven point, excuse me, about $9.1 million in revenue for the department. So some of our key requests for this next year, with the opening next year of our new grill and golf facility at Warren Springs, we are requesting two FTEs to help us with opening that new restaurant, and we're going to be focusing, one of those FTEs will be focusing on our banquet and special event opportunities out there, since we will have event space to handle up to 250 events across the city. Ice World will be looking for two different, or two new FTEs there, one in our programming area and one in our maintenance area. And as Eric mentioned earlier, all three of these different areas and the requests, all five FTEs are revenue neutral, so we'll use funding that we're generating in each of these areas to pay for those FTEs. In Ice World, to give you an example, our pre-COVID highest number of revenue, highest revenue, we're about $625,000 above that this past year, so we don't have this year completed yet, but, but we've been, we've seen some great success out there, we're getting a lot of kids on skates, and a lot of great things are happening at Ice World, so I really want to point that out, because during COVID, we even talked about, do we even want to be in the ice business? And now, we have built a healthy reserve that is actually helping us pay for the Warren Springs Grill and Golf Facility. Our program quietly is one of our most popular, we probably have the largest waiting lists of classes and camps in that area, so we're asking to use some of the revenue that we're generating there to hire a second FTE. We only have one, and our coordinator, he operates the entire art center at Fort Boise Community Center, so we're asking for, to use revenues to add another FTE there. Some of our high-impact projects, Alta Harris Park Design, so what we're proposing in '25 is to take the proposed impact fee budget we have and look at the approved master plan that we have, and how can we use the money available to knock out some of the design aspects of that park? And we're proposing, we would like to try to start looking at doing that in 2025, so it'd be both looking at what we could do with the master plan with the money we have, and a timeline associated with that. The Charles McDevitt, this was also one of our flagship engagement opportunities. We had, again, about 1,500 folks that participated in a master plan update of about nine acres of park, the undeveloped park we have at this location on Eagle Road. Great turnout, we settled in on a design with the neighborhood, and so we'll be starting construction using impact fees in, starting this next fiscal year. Veterans Memorial Park went through a long engagement process with the neighborhoods there, and came up with a plan to add an 18-hole disc golf course and some other safety improvements and some pathway improvements there. Those will also begin in '25. I put this volleyball court in here because besides the tennis courts and the basketball courts, this will be a full build-out of this park, so we're really close of having Molinar, which is arguably one of our most, I guess, attended parks we have in our system. It's relatively new, but with all the amenities we have in it between the skate park, the splash pad, and the other amenities, this is a destination park for the Treasure Valley, and so we're really close to having this as a full build-out for a community park. And then we're proposing some CW Moore Park site improvements, I've mentioned the urban restroom, we also are planning to do some ADA upgrades, as well as some pathway improvements, and some work on the plaza area in that park as well. Some of our higher-impact '25 projects, Fairview Park, this has been something that is, the neighborhood has long wanted, which is improvements to this park, so we are proposing some pathway, but mainly a playground, new playground that will also have a number of accessible components. We are proposing two new trails this fiscal year in the foothills, Curlew, and then a trail connection in the Upper Eighth Street area. We have a number of court resurfacing projects we're proposing, and then we also are doing a partnership arrangements with the Boise School District to do improvements to the parking lot at Fairmont Park as well. As it was mentioned earlier in Eric's presentation, South and Low Pool, we're in the middle of working with some consultants and architects, and also a contractor locally on coming up with some options for mayor and council to consider. I anticipate that I will be back before you at some point in June with a number of options for you to consider. We're getting really, really close on this. And then finally, we're working closely with our Public Works Team on a number of maintenance issues we have at the Boise Depot, and trying to get those maintenance issues built into a long-term budget there. And with that, I am happy, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, to answer any questions.
Madam Mayor, Doug, thank you. I just want to make sure I understand the language. Thank you. Thank you, Doug. I want to make sure that I understand the language that you're using in terms of FTEs, because in the slide that we had earlier today for FY25, there's the five revenue neutral, are those the ones that you're speaking about for Parks and Rec?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Willetts, yes.
Madam Mayor, so Doug, have we considered, I know the Play Camps are wildly popular to the point where they've crashed the site sometimes for registration, but not this year, so good job there. Have we considered a sliding scale for that? Would that help allow additional camps to come on site, I mean, online, or is it a limitation of facilities, or are there other considerations?
Madam Mayor, Councilpro Timstead, we are looking at a lot of different things. I mean, we're even looking at, how does Taylor Swift do her, you know, tickets, sales? And so we're talking to our vendor, we're talking internally, there's, there's pros and cons to a lot of the different ways to look at how we do this, and in the end, we've just said, it's 7:00 a.m., promote the heck out of that, and tell folks, get online at 7:00 a.m. And then we, we've worked great with our IT team, it did not really crash, it did a lot of circling, and maybe did a little delaying, but for the most part, those that ended up on a waiting list and didn't get what they wanted, we have found either places for almost everybody, or other camp alternatives for almost everybody. So it's, in the end, it's worked out, it didn't work out in that first hour perfectly for everybody, but I will tell you, we are committed to looking at how we can do it better.
Sure, and I guess, Madam Mayor, sorry, not just the registration process, but just in general, are there ways to add additional spots or camps or availability for those programs?
Madam Mayor, Councilpro Timstead, again, we are looking at, from a staffing model, that's one of the issues we have. Another is, we do not want to be at a park site that might be perfect, it has adequate restrooms, it has adequate shelters, storage space, but it has a, one of our ponds located there that we use for our surface irrigation, and we are staying away from those locations, and almost all of our park sites have those. So for example, Molinar would be a perfect Play Camp site, but it does have a pond location there. So we're looking at, there's a lot of factors we have to consider, and then if we find a great location, then it's, it is a staffing consideration. We, I just heard this week that we're within a couple of staff members of being fully staffed right now, so we're not even quite there yet, but we know we'll get an influx of kids from college and high school that will come in at 11th hour.
Perfect, thanks, Doug.
Yeah, and I'll just add on that, to be clear, these are summer temp workers, and so last year, and for those of you that were here, you might remember, that we were able to add an additional camp when we saw that we were able to find additional summer workers, and so a lot of it is that balancing of, yes, location, but I'm really making sure that we've got enough college kids coming back that want to take these jobs.
Madam Mayor, thank you, Doug, for this presentation. Could you speak to the progress on fiscal year '24 improvements that you made? I'm interested in the progress that I've seen at Spalding Ranch. Could you just speak to that, and any other improvements that are a highlight of this last fiscal year?
Absolutely. Madam Mayor, Council President Nash, yes, I didn't put it on the slide, but we are very happy with the progress we're making at Spalding Ranch. We have got the roadway completed there, the parking area has also been completed. We still have some impact fee funding available from that project, so we're going to do the pathway connections within that park, and then partnering with some partner organizations within the community, we will have plants coming into the ground this year. In fact, I think we have an event coming up in June where we're celebrating getting crops in the ground, and so we're excited about that. We still need to look at how we do the design and what the future looks like for the buildings, but as far as what our top priority was, to get access into the ground, into the property, which we've now accomplished, and then get crops in the ground, which will get done this summer.
And Doug, do we get infrastructure as far as utilities into where a bathroom could eventually be on that property? Do you know if we were able to do the utility infrastructure there?
Madam Mayor, Council President, I don't know, but I do, but what I would say is, I believe utilities are very close by as well, and so that is another, so what we're weighing, Council President, is, is it a restroom, and that shoots all of the, the rest of the impact fees that we have available now? Or do we do the pathway connections and go with maybe a porta-potty system and a wash system there that we may look at doing instead? So we're, we feel like we So we're, we, we feel like we need the access so people can get around the property. Um, so that's the direction that at least we're planning right now.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, um, I don't know why Steve wouldn't want to do this presentation. I feel like if you could have any presentation, you'd want Parks and Rec, they have all the funnest projects going on. Um, I, I don't have any data to back this up, but I, I, I think the city of Boise does a better job at taking care of its kids, um, when it comes to Parks and Parks and Rec than any other city in the country. It's truly phenomenal, um, what you all do to make it accessible, to make it equitable, and you're continuing to explore new ways. Don't, don't do any research without Taylor Swift is selling tickets. I think that's probably not the model that we're looking for.
Um, that was kind of a joke, actually.
Yeah, um, but I, I appreciate the constant efforts, and I would argue that, that may be the same for adults as well. I don't know if there's a better city to live in, um, as an adult, when it comes to recreation than here in Boise. Um, I don't know how we're doing for teens, and I don't frankly know how any city is doing for teens across the country. So I'm wondering if you could talk a little bit more about some of our, um, F Y twenty-five plans and how that will have a positive impact and what we're doing to grow some of our, um, offerings for our teenage community?
Uh, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hallie Burton, yes, that is definitely the, the lost kind of, uh, demographic that we are paying attention to. We do have a, um, a Kids City component at South Junior High where we are accommodating, um, junior high kids only at that location. We are in conversations with the school district, are there a couple of other junior high locations that we could, um, also create that same kind of programming, um, a- at other places? Um, as you're aware, we do have the, uh, community center in our Kids City. We have teen centers located in them. That has turned out to not be the perfect model, um, because we're mingling younger kids with older kids. So in those locations, we've been having those conversations, like, is there a better junior high closer by? Um, and we've looked at, are there other programmings, programming opportunities you need to get back to? Like some of our Friday night and Saturday night stuff we used to do in the past that we've kind of gotten away from pre-COVID. So, uh, there are some thoughts going on. I know you've had some conversations with some of our team about some opportunities. Um, but we'll continue to look at how we can make sure that demographic doesn't get left behind.
Great, thank you. Um, our Kid Cities, I think, are one of the coolest things that we do. Um, if I could hang out at every single Kid City in town, I'd be there, um, all the time. It's so much fun. Uh, I would encourage us to continue to look at South Junior High, um, what we might be able to do to enhance the experience there. I look at some of our Kid Cities that are more grade school focused, and they are awesome. Their facilities are amazing, the programming is great, and I don't know that we're offering quite the same bar, um, at South or, or as we're looking at other junior highs as well. Um, and I guess I would just encourage us in general, when we're looking at parks in the future, when we're planning anything, I think we always do such a great job of like, here's the playground, here's where the adults are gonna play, you know, softball and soccer and some of these other things. Um, and not always, what are the free aspects of what we can do, um, for a, a teenage population? And I would encourage us to continue to explore those a, those areas, and I'm certainly willing to be, you know, active in that exploration. Um, but I think our teens might actually have some good ideas for us as well. So the more that we can engage with them and kind of looking forward, um, even when we were looking at our Castle Hills Park, that was the coolest thing to be able to work with my niece and my nephew and say, which one of these parks would you choose? And they're active in identifying what their future playground is gonna look like in the area. I think that there's some lessons, um, some great lessons to be learned there on, on what we might be able to do with teens going forward.
Yeah, and Madam Mayor, Council, uh, Member Hallie Burton, we're also looking at those skate spots at a lot of different locations. Again, I didn't put it on the slide up here, but we do anticipate building Ivy Wild, uh, skate spot this, uh, late this summer. And so we're, we're, we're trying to find some things that maybe teens en- enjoy doing in some of the park sites and in, in improving on that as well.
Madam Mayor, um, Doug, I think if we want to help improve these teen sites, I think bringing Taylor Swift would be a great idea. I think you get an awful lot of teens that would be happy to be there. Um, I, I appreciate the work that Parks and Recs does. I, I agree, um, with Council President Hallie Burton, the, um, you guys do an amazing job with, with a small staff and with a large benefit out to the community for these camps that are provided in the summer, for adults, for kids. Uh, the adaptive sports is, is all really great things. Uh, one ask that I know we've talked about before, I'm gonna make it two asks, is to consider a, um, a permanent bathroom site at Liberty Park. Uh, we have our Boise Little League fields there. Um, also later today, I think in council meeting, we're looking at our garden program with the Janus Foundation. So we'll have a, quite a bit of workers there as well. And if that's something that we can get budgeted sooner, uh, maybe fiscal twenty-five or fiscal twenty-six, I think it'd be very beneficial. Um, second item I'd like to take a look at is potentially what it would take or what the cost would be to provide a parking lot at fire station that's on Maple Grove. I want to say it's eighteen, but I don't know if I got that number right. Uh, there's already paths that are there that go into West Junior High, and you can go up and walk the canal. But if you're on that end of town, there's no place really close by to those, to park, and it might be, just be the start of a development at McGurtyo Park. So I'd love to understand that cost.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, it looks like it's, that's it. Since we've just got, Jessica, don't worry about it. Since we've just got ten minutes, um, we'll wait and start with library after lunch. So we'll take a break until noon when we're back here for our noon meeting.